Make sure your phone comes on. We are going to this class, remember, we've got one more member working in online. We're trying a little bit different arrangements for Zoom options. Yes, we can hopefully go forward and get in our issues a couple weeks ago. So yeah, please bear with us. I need to be able to see Congressman Kennedy so I can call him. Okay, all right. So why don't you guys at the way to just make sure that I have the ability to see him. So I can call him if any questions. So we'll go ahead. I'll do a quick little call, obviously, who's here? Congressman Fargill.
President.
Congressman Curtis. Senator Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Congressman Spencer.
President.
All right, we've got Congressman Kennedy trying to get on online. And you have members, say, on your absence tonight. So Lisa, we'll start off pretty quickly. We've got our public hearing. Thank you, Mike. You're not. Yes, again. Will you talk like?
Sure.
So this is a public hearing for the River District Open Space Zone change. This is a little more complicated than what everyone has done before. In the fact that it is, they're looking to amend the comprehensive land use map, the River District's specific area land regulations, and also to change the zoning on several properties that are owned by the River District, by the River District homeowners association, some of which are zoned RDR, which is the residential, which is residential zone, and some of them which are zoned RDR, which is the New York City. Again, there's a total about comprehensive estate properties. There are five properties, here we go. There are five properties that are zoned RDR, and then include Hackman Park, River Rock Park, and three parcels that collectively have become known as the New York City. There's also one parcel that has just recently been fragmented. Let me slide this. Next slide, please. These are five parcels that are RDR zoned, Hackman Park, Greenway, Hot Side Community Farm, and River Rock Park. Next slide, please. And this is the lot that is RDR zoned. It's block two, block one of River District Town Center First Edition, which was recently fragmented. And it's a future, same time, which trailhead park spends part two minus nine thousand six hundred square feet. Next slide, please. So as you know, the criteria for approval for a comprehensive plan amendment, the development code amendment are set out in city code. And we'll put this one before you'll see me again at the end when we get to the regulations. The code is not explicit about the criteria for zone change, but the staff report does identify some of the things that it's looking to. Next slide, please. So I'm not going to go into specifics or anything other than to say that we reviewed it in the workshop. We reviewed it in workshop. It isn't, it was in the staff report. And it's really just provided to you now just as a record of the fact that we did follow our procedural requirements with regards to this case. Next slide, please. So to date, we've received a total of now forty comments because we all have received the needed via email, the fortieth comment this afternoon. I'm not trying to update this presentation. Again, we commonly cite concerns were as follows. He wasn't older through the farm operation and said we need to reinforce the human requirement of lack of streaming and buffering adjacent residential uses, lack of engagement of labor and property, the H O A number required for development of the farm or virtuality properties, and general incompatibility of an active commercial farm adjacent residential property. Next slide, please. The staff analysis basically focused on the fact that most of the uses that we allow in the zone are already allowed as outright permanent uses. Many differences in uses allowed are that the agricultural product, craft sales, and farmer's market would now be allowed on currently zoned RDR properties. They're not currently. They are allowed in the RDR zone already. And the other is that the community garden, farm can, the market garden would be outright allowed uses with proposed definitions added to the River District Development Code. As we've heard testify before, they're actually allowed as a limited use now. So next slide, it's up to you. So differences in the proposed development code, and again, this is a whole new chapter in the River District Development Code, but it identifies a number of primary structures that specifically are already allowed as accessory structures. The one thing that's different is the produce cleaning buildings and shipping containers are expressly identified within acceptable primary structure. Next slide, please. Also, there's some differences in the zoning regulations and actually trying to be a little bit more protective of residential zones. So increasing side yard setback, zero that's under yard setback, five percent. Reducing the maximum lot coverage from thirty percent to ten percent. And adding design standards specifically buffering stream of metal shipping containers for residential uses. And again, I would note that currently metal shipping containers are expressly prohibitive as an accessory use, impacting all River District zones and impacting all regular city zones. Next slide, please. The staff report identifies a number of, quite a large number of relevant comprehensive planning policy, but we wanted to focus on the key moral concern that over potentially new conflict. Urban design goal one, which should be giving the building character and seizing resources of the community. Housing goal one, preserving the character of the district neighborhoods and exploiting high quality redevelopment. And this policy one, encouraging the dollar to work with women to develop means that address neighborhood concerns such as environmental protection, aesthetics, quality of life, property values, and preservation of both the space. And this policy number two provides for compatible groups of housing and commercial uses in all commercial districts, neighborhood centers, community centers, and senior business districts. And urban design policy one, maintaining design standards and a design review process to ensure that neighborhood and community centers are developed with mainly impact on surrounding communities are consistent with the character and character of the neighborhood absence. Next slide, please. Also, urban design policy nineteen, which is talking about maintaining standards against the neighborhood centers. And the one that specifically came online was on site of the use of these heavy machinery storage areas, open docks, and parking areas to be screened from the other adjacent uses and the materials. And urban design policy twenty, which is providing specific regulations to that the aesthetic floors and boulevards. And again, similar, provide performance standards to actively screen heavy or being fashion industrial type developments that have exterior clutter, exterior storage, exterior equipment, exterior vegetation, and some of. I have note that this is identified in the River District S A P as a greenway property where the community farm is located now, which is defined as really being a best in oriented type of aesthetic. It's not explicitly called out as an aesthetic framework, but the way it's described, it certainly would, it could be argued that it is in fact exactly that. Next slide, please. So again, as I mentioned before, the burden is on the applicant to demonstrate that a change in economic, technological, or ending conditions occur at the moment of proposed amendment. The proposed amendment is compatible with adjacent uses or if the, or if the proposed mitigation is insufficient to make the proposed amendment compatible with surrounding uses. That the proposed amendment is not detrimental to the public or the or that the proposed amendment is in public interest. Next slide, please. Now, planning permission. Oh, next slide.
Sorry, it wouldn't, a little haywire for a second.
Uh-huh. So. So you need to go back a slide first, please. One more slide, please. So the planning permission proposed modifications to the development regulations associated with this new zone. And with the specific recommendations that we gave, to delete the allowance for storage containers as a primary use, and also eliminate the design standards proposed for storage containers. It's important to remember because they proposed this before they went through their conclusions. So next slide, please. So based upon the changed language that they were proposing, the planning condition valid proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is not detrimental to public welfare. The proposed amendment is not warranted by achieving economic, technological, or land use conditions. The proposed amendment is not necessary to correct an error. The proposed amendment is necessary to verify the legal impact. The proposed amendment is necessary to provide for proposed use that would not be used here. So the proposed amendment is not necessarily in public interest. Next slide, please. Now, keep in mind, the conclusions, you only have to find one of them to, as a basis and to approve the changes. And so with, with the modifications that they proposed to the language related to storage containers, the planning had to recommend that to city council that the amendments for the comprehensive plan land use in the River District Development Relation include with modifications that are specifically included as exhibit. So with that, next slide, please. Well, I think you have to move slightly. The hearing examiner, Professor Tim, also held a public hearing. Her focus was just on the zoning clause, I think, which are an aspect of it. And the hearing examiner recommended that city council of zoning property, the R D O, if council finds that the comprehensive plan amendment is not, should be approved, then let the S A P should be amended to include the R D O's own specification. So basically, as you read her decision, she's saying that it's hard to say unless first you have to decide what the regulations are. And if you agree with the regulations, you agree with the regulations and you find that they're in the new first of the city and consistent with the comprehensive plan. And recommend it for the comprehensive plan. And then you. So as I said, it's a little more complicated than your average case. Next slide, please. So with that, it's your questions. That was very good, right? So here, I'm keeping my eye on this, this Congressman Kennedy has questions. So Congressman.
This is the product, the slide that let me know if it is and is not.
Yes, absolutely. Michael, can you help me out? Yeah. Yeah. Good.
Good. I just wanted to break down procedurally the reference that only one of these two that has been fired voted to the legal allow. Plus, considering the.
Yes, but I would say that there are some in there that by the very nature if they're not, if it's not in the public interest, I would think that it would not be in the interest of the city council. Even if there were other categories of them that were. The other thing I will say is that statutorily, it does need to be consistent with the contract. So if you find that it's not consistent with the content, you should have an amendment or an amendment containing so that the code and the content are consistent.
And considering the notice of emergency by the planning commission, if those amendments are to be adopted, it would consistent with the contract.
That was the finding of the planning permission. Now that's the finding of the city council. Any other questions? Congressman Fargill?
Lisa, just so I can cover up my head. Can we go back to those slides that have one of these policies one?
Sure.
Which I think. So potential conflict policy in conflict. And that says that that puts in conflict with land use policy one, which currently is developed as real for the development. In this case, was that just skipped on past? The discussion of the neighbors or how is that?
I'm going.
Why are the examples there?
Well, because I believe that we were based, and this is based on a testimony that I've heard, that on the period that they were not engaged until after much of this was already in process. And here is that it's based upon the testimony, not the.
And then I guess my second question is the determination of the planning permission. Is that in hands?
No, it isn't.
What was third?
I assume it was five, one. See you later on this last second, Congressman. Do you have any questions? Okay, so then you go. So, no, the next step is applicants. Okay. So Michael, if you can bring forth on the finished presentation.
Well.
Thank you.
Yeah, then we still found the, into private team. So the developer River District project, I appreciate that you presented this. Where, where the developers of that River District project and so they're proposing to create an open space zone for the River District project. The, oh, excuse me. Presentation. Come on. So again. When we're doing that, we're promoting an open space zone for the River District project. The city have an open space zone. But that zone wasn't applicable to River District because we processed the River District as an S A P. And when we established that S A P, initially, we didn't include an open space zone. We included only three zones, a commercial zone, a residential zone, and a mixed use zone. So we didn't have an open space zone. So the open space that we created within the project ended up being zoned, in this case, commercial, residential, River, residential, and River District commercial. We, I suppose in some ways didn't think about it when we prepared the initial S A P plan for River District. But open space was a critical element of the River District plan, open space and parks. And so you can see the self-expression here shows the scope of the green spaces on that map, the scope of the parks and open spaces that we have integrated into the River District plan. And they're actually much more comprehensive than the parks and open spaces that were included in the Meadowhead Plan, which was the basis of the city of River Lake on the south side of the freeway. We have quite a bit more open space, quite a bit more greenways established on that in the River District plan. The concept of the River District was to have an integrated system of parks and open space so that we would provide opportunities for pre-plant and multiple use of the open space and park areas. They would thrive for a broad range of uses. They would contribute to the formation of strong neighborhoods, opportunity for people, meeting each other, gathered, communicating with each other, to create a strong sense of place and social fabric within the neighborhood. That's really the whole concept we wanted to develop in River District. So the open spaces are interconnected to each other with greenways. And we want them to be responsive to both the cultural and natural resources that exist in that development along those foot lanes. So all of those. If you click to the next slide, please. All of those were, all of those vision concepts were identified in the S A P plan. And a lot of language that is quoted, this language draft, you know, out of the, even in terms of the importance of parks and open spaces. So the reasons that, the reasons for this R D O zone, first of all, you know, the parks and open spaces that I mentioned are key to the, to the design and vision for the River District project. The city has that open space zone, as I mentioned, and the purpose is to provide better protection of those open space assets as we go into the future. And that, and that additional protection is provided by creating a separate zone. And that separate zone limits the uses that can be, that that open space then can be used for. And it provides development standards that are specific to parks and open space uses. And so as the, as the community has gotten larger and we've accumulated and developed more parks and open space lands, we recognize the need to provide better long-term protection for those assets. And as the H O A gets larger, they become more difficult to manage and they become somewhat erratic. And we have to look at Facebook and see some of the difficulties that large H O As have. So we felt that in the long term, we provide better protection for the open space asset by having a zone, as the city does, for open space and park areas. Next slide, please. So that, these are the, the park assets that would be rezoned to the open space zone. And each of them are unique and provide a different kind of asset and a different kind of use. And there's a wide range of uses occurring on each of these properties. So if you go to the next slide, please. This is Happling Park, and Happling Park is largely open space. It has room for play fields. But it's primarily a passive park. It's there to serve some larger events. So it's got a faucet in the middle of it that serves events. And it's got a small little playground for toddlers that went in. Then slide is River Rock Park. River Rock Park has a large picnic shelf at the family gatherings. It has playground. It has some small community gardens. And it's got a large field that's used for soccer practice and those kinds of things. So its use is somewhat different than the use of Happling Park. Then the Trailhead Park, and Trailhead Park was the, was a small little parcel shown at the Long Harbor Road. That small parcel would be integrated with two other parcels. One is the existing trail there that's owned by the city of River Lake. And another piece is a, is a piece of River Park property that joins the trail there, that joins this property that's owned by Spokane County. And those three parcels together will form a larger trailhead park at that location. And we have planned an improvement to the parking at that location. And we have planned a children's playgrounds. And then we have planned a new secondary pathway from the Centennial Trail to this park area. And that would be able to access the, the River District Town Center and the Artisan District that's there. So all that would be incorporated. These are those three parcels. Only one small piece of that is owned by the H O A. The rest of it's owned by Spokane County and the city of Spokane. And then the final piece is the three parcels along the pedestrian pathway from Orchard Park with the Spokane River. And this is what we call the community garden or the, or the River District farm. This is, the uses that are occurring there have been there for about three years. They're permitted in the underlying R D O zone. And it's on land that's owned by the H O A. The idea that there's been no community contact or involvement in this is just not a true statement. The, the H O A has been involved with it from the beginning. It's the development that's there is on land that's owned by the H O A. We've had numerous meetings with the neighborhood regarding what we're doing there. We've sent informational flyers to all of the residents in River District about what's happening there. And we answered, community has raised questions about certain things, about what's the role of the H O A in financing of it and so forth. And we answered all of those questions. The farm community garden has a newsletter. The newsletter goes out to about forty people. The, the, it has a website where information is available to the community. And all of the information and documents related to the lease of the H O A to anybody that's managing the garden that has ingredients and so forth is all available to everyone. It's all posted on the H O A website. All of this was planned as a community amenity. And the, as the property gets larger, the range and scope of community amenities and open spaces is broadening because we want to provide opportunities for a wide range of people with a wide range of interests and a wide range of activities to be able to gather. to be able to gather and exercise. That is part of the community. There are a lot of people that are interested in gardening. We've had small little community gardens for a long time. There are numerous locations within River District and City that's incorporated down into its own parks and open spaces. There's a lot of interest in, there's a lot of interest in gardening. There's a lot of interest in supporting local agriculture, learning about gardening. And all of that is part of what we're trying to provide in terms of this, like community amenity. This isn't a commercial operation. It's, the purpose of this entity is, is not to make money. The purpose of it is to provide a community amenity. That doesn't mean that people that have a weekly farm box get it for free. They pay for it and that helps cover some of the costs of operating, managing the garden beds and the orchards and the greenhouses. There are costs associated with managing and maintaining those. The funds that come from selling the produce does not cover the cost of that. And other funds come to the organization through various grants that are available. The garden provides an opportunity for people to volunteer. We have about 20 active volunteers. It provides an opportunity for people to learn about gardening. We have a monthly educational program that people can participate in, we can participate in. And then it provides access to locally grown and sustainable produce and food that is used and accessed by people and families. Anything that is accessed from the farm is donated to local food banks. The next slide is just a few pictures of what's there. This is the greenhouse taken from the trail. This is the greenhouse and one of the, and the next slide is the greenhouse taken from Union Street. This is the, the next slide is one of the storage containers that's been a source of complaints from the neighboring homes. And and on it is a small air conditioning unit. You can see it there in that air conditioning unit. It's a typical small air conditioning unit made by home people. It plugs into an outlet that's on the inside of that container. And much smaller than the air conditioning units that move from any single tenant's home. And the next slide is a view from the trail. And then the next slide is the orchard. There are about 35 and 60 trees in the orchard. And then there's D-boxes that are, you know, D-boxes that are managed that produce some. So the this issue of compatibility with community uses is obviously been a big source with handful of adjacent homeowners. While we believe the use of the containers limited visibility from the street and the adjacent properties, they've been a source of complaint. And we told the planning commission that that they preferred us to use a different kind of structure that we would. And so the planning commission made that decision. And so we've already started changing the structures. And so we've replaced one of the shipping containers that we used for equipment storage and replaced it with a wooden structure. So our then, the shipping containers already been removed and replaced with a wooden structure. And we submitted a building permit for a second permanent structure that would be closed, gathered in containment. So that there'll be a permanent wood structure there. I believe that complaints about the shipping containers have been overblown. But in any event, we responded to those complaints and we told the planning commission that we would follow whatever recommendations they made and keep them. But I strongly believe that what we're doing here is, is in the interest of the community. There's a lot of support for the farm. There's a lot of people that benefit from the work that's being done with community gardens. And we believe it's a very positive thing for the community that a lot of community gardens are benefiting from. The next slide is just a couple of quick examples of that. This is a this is just an example of a farm table dinner we have. It's using produce that was raised on the farm. Which is one of the many planned activities that are related to community gardens. The next one, next slide is a volunteer event that we've had. As I said, we have like plenty of volunteers in the community. And when I ask the volunteers why they volunteer, they gave me basically two reasons. One is that they want to learn about gardening and this is an opportunity for them to learn more about gardening. And secondly, they want to meet their neighbors with similar interests. And so that's why we have these gathering events with the volunteers so they can know each other and they're able to form that social connection with others people in the community. Next slide please. There will be, we would propose that there would be future zoning changes for additional open space areas as they develop. And as we have specific legal descriptions for them. Then as we develop additional open space areas as the balance of the community builds out, they would be included in the open space zone. Along with the open space zone category, the next slide please. When you create a zone like we have, you have to create developed regulations that would go with that zone. So that's what we've done. And so the, the residential open space zone, the River District open space zone is actually a down zone. And it allows skier uses than the current zone. So it's limited to uses that are typical of parks and open spaces. And excludes commercial residential uses that would be permitted by the existing zone. So by preventing those uses, then we believe that provides that additional protection to the open space areas so they won't be used for some other commercial or residential use that currently permitted in the way those open spaces are zoned now. The imposed areas, the developed regulations impose more restrictive development standards. So we've reduced building heights and site coverage. And we've increased setbacks to adjacent uses further further than the developed zone, regulation zones. We're also requesting that the language in those two sections that I have related to the metal storage containers be removed. And that's consistent with the planning commission recommendation. So these two sections relate to the metal storage containers in the develop, in the the screening requirements that we had for metal storage containers. So because we're not going to be removing them as a, as a primary use, then we're removing the the development standards that were around them. So this, these removal of those two sections is consistent with the recommendation from the planning commission. In all, in, in total, these new development standards are much more protective of the, than the current zone is adjoining neighboring properties. But getting to the getting to the the decision criteria that we have. The first one is a proposed amendment consistent with the conference of plan. So the thing to remember here is that this proposed amendment is whether or not there should be an open space zone in the River District. That's all about, it isn't about the farm. The farm is already permitted use. What you're seeing there, the activities that are taking place there are all already permitted. Whether you approve this zone or not will not change one single thing about the exam event, not one single thing. This isn't about whether there should be a farm there or not. This isn't there about whether there should be an orchard there or not. This isn't about whether families should be able to volunteer there or be at a weekly box of produce. That's nothing to do with this zone change. This zone change did only should there be an open space building or not. If an open space zone is consistent with the co-plan and the balance of the city of Riverdale, it's impossible for me to understand why an open space zone in River District would not be consistent with the conference of plan because you already have an open space zone. And I would point out that the planning commission and variant examiner both found that the River District open space zone was consistent with the conference of plan. All of the citations that the staff made in their staff report are all related to issues that neighbors have complained about related to the farm. That they're completely dependent to this decision about whether they should be open space zone or not. And most of those we've addressed by eliminating the shipping containers that's behind the structures on the site. The second one is have there been changed conditions to avoid the amendment? And I think there have been significant change conditions. The, the growth of the community and the increase in the commoners and parks has increased the importance of long-term planning for open spaces. And we're, we're now in a situation where River District has been there for 15 years. A lot of it has been built. There's a lot of open space areas there that we have a better understanding of what they are and their importance to the community. And protecting those long-term has become more clear given the development that's occurred within the project. As the community has grown, the range and scope of open spaces that we need has also increased. And the total River District will have a population of over 3,000 people. And there's a significant amount of open space that will be associated with that. And as that community has grown and the range of open space assets that we're acquiring increases the need for the protection of those assets. And the pandemic itself and the changes that we've seen in lifestyle habits of people over the last five or six years has increased the need for open space areas in, in gathering spaces. People are spending more time at home and less time in their place of employment. And having these third places where people can meet and gather have opportunities for them to increase their involvement in the community has become more important. Is the amendment detrimental to the public good? The rezone is going to provide added protection for the open spaces. And that clearly is in the public interest. There have been complaints about the shipping containers and so forth. We believe that we've addressed those concerns. I don't you don't have to deal with a lot of citizens and a lot of citizen complaints about things. And you don't necessarily agree with them all. But we try to listen to what people have to say and make changes that we feel are appropriate. But we're not going to make changes that destroy the vision of what we're trying to accomplish. And we've had people complaining about trails. They don't want trails to go behind their houses. And we'll take efforts to try to screen the trail or buffer it in some way. But we're not going to eliminate the trail. Because our interest is in what's in the best interest of the community and the vision for the neighborhood that we're trying to be creating. We've had people complain about showing movies at night. Parking in front of their houses. And we tried to deal with those things. We tried to provide information about, you know, a better place for people to park. Try to avoid some of the negative impacts of those community events that we're having. But that doesn't mean that we're going to stop showing movies. Or we're going to stop having events. And so there's, there's a balance there that, that has to be kept. But we believe that and I stand by our record of developing communities for 40 years that we make an attempt to work with neighbors and do our best to meet those needs. But we're not going to destroy the vision of what we're trying to accomplish. We and again, I want to emphasize that everything that's happening there is not impacted by this zone change, so nothing to do with it. Going to continue the way it is, whether you approve this zone change or you don't approve this zone change, nothing's changed. Is the amendment in the public interest? You know, obviously providing additional protection to parks is in the public interest. But we believe that having produce available and food available to people living in the community, having places where people can volunteer and learn about gardening is beneficial to the community. We also believe that this gardening activity there is representative connection to the cultural history of Spokane Valley. This property before it was developed by us going back into the 1910s, 2030s was truck farms and orchards. That's how this property, this history of this property. And we believe, and from the very beginning of the development of this project, we intended there to be agricultural activities on the story. It's in the very first vision of River District SAP that is accrued by the people of the city. And the nature and the scope of that, of course, has changed in 15 years exactly what it's going to be there. But that connection, the reason that we put that in the SAP was making that cultural connection to the history of this property. And we think that's very important and we believe that strongly in the public interest. So I'm going to conclude with that and ask if you approved this new region, this new category, this new zone category for the River District. And that you rezoned these properties to that And that you rezoned these properties to that new zoning category? Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to be at the clock and we're going to discuss this scenario this morning or agenda meeting. Because we're running up on seven o'clock, I'd like to propose, and I jumped in if I'm going in the wrong direction, propose that when it comes time for agenda approval, or to the opposite, to continue this public hearing during the opening of a meeting. Instead of waiting, having everybody use here, wait through everything else. If then we can have a motion to add continuance of the public hearing, maybe after citizen comments. If you have anybody else who has different citizen comments, go and then add other comment or continue the public hearing after citizen comments. Does that make sense? Is that a good place?
I think that's probably the appropriate place. It's why they did not warn. Everything was a problem.
Okay, that would mean that everybody has come to participate in the hearing. If they don't feel the same way and for words recognition, it was unhappy. So if that's okay with everybody else, we'll go ahead and we'll, we'll put a pause on the public hearing until it resumes during seven o'clock. After citizen comments assuming that that could help and then that. And then we have the agenda. And so we're going to take a break until seven.
Because I made the difference of deliberations.
Okay, so that's at seven?
Yeah, so what they'll do is they're going to continue the hearing after public comment.
Okay.
So you can, you know, that is one other, one, one other person.
Robert, right, so it'll be his presentation next, basically is what's going.
His presentation next, then you can pull up mine and just park it on the public testimony slide.
Public testimony slide, okay.
Until, until we get the next public testimony. The last slides behind. African testimony and then public testimony.
African testimony, public testimony, council deliberations. That's it?
Oh, that's it, in the slot, the presenting, okay.
And then, are they making decisions tonight?
So, so they need to deliberate, they will, or they could decide the question.
I said, I didn't, that can't count from the agenda, I didn't see.
Well, normally, deliberations is part of the better, deliberations, the general part of the public, they can continue hearing.
Yeah, so will they keep that? If they're going to go over, there may be some.
By the way, so I used to have, I'm using, like, design.
Yeah, because it's already, you know, it's already the garage. So we're both new, they're just, they're, they're. You can put it down with watching. It just makes it awkward to go from one garage to another garage.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, you just email it to me. My, I'm meeting with him at thirty and if I can show him that, that seventy actually involves a concern.
Yeah, that's, it's not, yeah.
It's not like it's in the storage containers you see in garage.
That's all.
All right, yeah, he can send me that picture, that'll be super.
Yeah, okay.
Well, that makes sense.
No, no, it's pretty liberating, I think so. It did to me last night. Okay. All right, everybody, welcome to our last regular councilman meeting of twenty twenty three. It's been a sweet year, wild ride. We're wrapping it up today. So it's our Tuesday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty three, regular council meeting, our online on Zoom and the test plan. So it's anything to avoid that could choose of the past. Obviously, we're here in working on City Hall. We're going to start off the meeting with the invocation here by Councilmember Cardio, followed by the.
Father, my father, we are grateful to be able to meet as a community this evening and discuss the issues that are important for all of us. We ask for your blessing in this meeting that you may be able to have a conversation and friends and neighbors and that you can come to the decision that is best for our community.
We'll call meetings order. We'll start off with our local call here. Okay, Councilmember Cardio. Councilmember Card, so Councilmember from here from here. Councilmember Spencer. Councilmember Dunn.
I'm here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Present.
Thank you, joining us online and Councilmember Gailman is out here tonight. We're going to hear two of the skews. I have a motion by Councilmember Spencer and second by Councilmember Dunn. All in favor of the new Councilmember Gailman, please say aye. All right, motion passes. All right, so we're going to launch the agenda for the, uh, the, 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 the end of the earlier workshop of motion, people, agenda.
Admiral, I need to repeat, sir, innovation of the sixth thought workshop after I have six sitting on it.
For a second. And second by Councilmember Cardio, any questions? Let's see, in all favor of admitting the agenda as motion, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we need further requests to adjourn the agenda. Motion in second and third, especially not hearing any, all in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye. Right, any opposed? Motion passes, six year old, all right. Fast forward, we are up to citizen comments. So what we're going to do, I hope anybody who has submitted for zoning change, we're going to direct citizen comments on anything but the zoning change first. So, um, so if there's anybody in the audience here at City Hall, if you have citizen comments to make, um, you know, the old sheet over by the, the door over there, if you can fill that out and hand it to Chelsea, you can, you don't forget it to me. If you are online and would like to make a citizen comment, again, this theory right now is not for the zoning change, but we'll go continue with the public hearing after this. Please go ahead and send a note to our meeting post and let me know. Now, rules are three minute time limit, please be respectful. Is there anybody here who had a fill out sheet, if they have it, that can have a comment on anything besides. Do you need, do we have anybody online?
I don't see any hand rates or comments online currently.
Okay, all right, so we'll, please remember, we have another opportunity at the end of the meeting, if something comes up, we'd like to speak to it. So we'll go in, go ahead and move to resume the public hearing at seven oh seven P M. And I don't know what warnings are sent to me in, but I'm still going. So Cynthia, your name is. Welcome. And I guess I have a new order. Well, this won't make that. Good evening, ladies, gentlemen, fellow neighbors, members of the city council, mayor. I stand before you, I will be impressed by the collective knowledge and sincere efforts displayed in the fascinating testimony for one member. Many of us, I suspect, have found ourselves unexpectedly thrust into the realm of zoning changes, becoming unwinned amateurs and a prospect that carries profound implications for our community. This newfound involvement underscores the genuine concern we share for the potential consequences that may arise from allowing the zone change to the river. It is indeed a meaningful situation in the world, a costly development, meticulous planning, and yet unforseen oversight. Perhaps it's evolved truly to collect the estate, or perhaps as before, a spot building, benefiting the owner while undermining the free existing rights and uses of adjacent property owners. Spot zoning, as convention understood, involves focusing on small parcel lands can be used in a matter of vastly different things around the land, totally benefited the grandparent to the detriment of nearby residents. It does beg the question, how did this proposed zone change, essentially in the way of uniform expansion, benefit the homeowners in close proximity? Especially when these homeowners are already at odds with the existing farm. Is this then the prospect of the matter, a community of neighbors expressing a clear dissatisfaction in the farm that has been improved under the guise of a community initiative? And we, we admittedly oppose this growth. To me, the residents, we look to our elected leaders to discern the true nature of the situation. Allow file our effort to advance the identity of the situation with the particular politics of this home. In essence, we find ourselves very prosperous where the, where the interests of the community clash when we propose this landing. It raises a fundamental question of a decided degree of decision-making process and the duty of our elected representatives to uphold the will of the people. By the rightful steward of our community, we implore you, our city council members, to scrutinize the zone change which is opposing and concerning us, considering not only its potential impacts, but also the underlying motives behind it. Our shared hope is that we will stand as guardians of the community's people, ensuring that citizens made today resonate with the collective voice that they deserve. Let us not permit the approachment of interest that might run from us to the well-being of our community as we entrust you with the solemn responsibility of preserving the harmony and integrity of the village. Thank you for your attention. All right, so if you don't have our clock on screen, I'll keep it on my phone and I will quietly announce in your fifteen second slots. Next up, we have Cynthia.
My name is Betty Zerba. I live at Bonnie Burns in the River District on Glen Road Avenue, directly behind the sizable nine hundred forty foot greenhouse and the new twelve foot storage that blocking our once extensive view that Greystone promise would always remain a green space protected against future buildings. We were lied to by Jim Frank in Greystone. I urge you not to approve the zoning change from residential to open space. Sorry about my voice. Based upon my testimony and other ten thirty residents' testimony here today and past testimonies before the planning commission, I am exhausted. My neighbors are exhausted. And the entire River District community is exhausted with the city of Liberty Lake and the of Frank. From not hearing our pleas and our valid community concerns over the impact of changing zones from residential to open space in all four parks and farms in the River District. Many of my neighbors are not here tonight because they have become discontented and exhausted by the ambivalence of the city of, of Liberty Lake and the planning commissioners to our extensive testimony. The city of Liver, Liberty Lake let us down. Jim Frank and Greystone should have never been allowed to develop the green space under the abyss of electric wires and build it as a community garden. Although the city does allow small farming, the city did not consider that the farm would back up to the fences of residents which the noise and the odor from farming activities, structures, buildings, cargo containers, and added traffic would harm. The city only considers the code allowing small farming. Allowing this commercial operation is in a master plan community is a disgrace to the city. I realize that the council may not be reviewing this zoning question regarding how it may impact individual residents that backface or have a view of the proposed open spaces, including the four parks, but I believe you should. How does a farm benefit the community? It is a commercial operation, and I just saw on the slide that in an open space, commercial entities are not allowed. How can Jim Frank sell us on the argument that it's not a commercial entity? It is a commercial entity. Whether or not you approve of this zoning change, I would like you to consider the following rules to be applied and enforced by the city of Liberty Lake. I would also hope that further workshops are provided. I would also hope that further workshops are provided so that all of our concerns that we provided to the planning commission, we can argue. Concerns down below, take a look at.
Thank you.
Who wants? Looks like we got a clock working.
There's one more uh citizen on Glenbrook Avenue. Um we oppose the um zone change to residential open zone. Um the hearing examiner suggested approving the open zone, but falling as if um that there's a specific site change. However, you know that in March of twenty twenty two, Mr. Frank declared that the zone change was unfortunately a third technology center at older emissions. He promised the city to have near two thousand retail and walking plans. Walking paths, sorry. Among that, the city brand began selling units, he sold two of the apartments to another developers to build apartment complexes. He is currently promising to do activities in the River District which are already permitted usage. And given open zones, we have no protection from the city to dispose the vacant switch like we did at Meadowwood. The vacant switch we've already experienced is Mr. Frank putting an industrial farm behind our house instead of a community garden like we proposed. They are already watching processing and storing vegetables in this area behind our houses. It's noisy and it appears to be to the prail test. The prail has become more important to the farm than used at the walking path. And when they put compost in, it smells like your door behind a dent. In the July twenty 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 three journal of business, there is a review with current growers and Mr. Frank expounding on new plans to expand the industrial agricultural business. Under the current zone, quote, new agricultural actively farming is not permitted. The proposed zoning change appears to be in conflict with the comprehensive plan goals and policies for the River District, specifically land use policy one, which states, quote, "The encouraged developers to work with neighborhoods to develop plans that address neighborhood concerns such as environmental protection, aesthetic quality of life, property values, and preservation of holding state." Please do not vote for the open zone.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And I wrote, uh this is not supposed to be a back and forth, but I would love to respectfully um make a clarification regarding to Meadowwood property um that that proposal did include the potential for um multifamily housing um up to three stories, uh only in certain parts of that zone. What is what you think about that is in in line with what was included. I want to make sure we clarify that. Um Cynthia, you know, there's a tall point that we already have to go through on the on the clock until we start.
I already know this night in that I personally did not perform in front of harvest who came in to turn my trees. And we had done, we heard nothing about the same years at that point. We already even made them a couple of the entire.
And you can read. All right, so I don't look like you have a clock, so I'll tighten it a bit.
Uh as I mentioned, my name is Cynthia. I live in the city of Hundred and New. My request is simple. Please help us preserve our laws of safety. The last time I spoke two weeks ago, I signed some of the laws and CC hours whether you listen. In short, they require generally respect on the use of these. Ensure that they can enjoy getting outside by not creating nuisance, such as smell and noise.
That's right.
Yeah, the very people who crafted these CC hours are violated when you're setting up the farm. You'll hear from my neighbors about the key issues, the smelling fertilizer, very rich, the being scared by barn owners, and the noise from farming activity in the house fans. You'll see on the left, the view from my end, which is still very nice as I back up to the picture. And you'll see the view that my neighbors now have looking out at the farm. So it's not true, but they lost a lot. I don't know if it's the least thing in the first. And why are they so close to the fence? Because of the square area which hit by the farm, that's it. Cargo containers are in place, so they didn't.
Next slide.
The beginning of the bottom half is also the impact. It's diminished now. It went along the middle meadows until it became the farm where the asphalt swallowed. The walkers now share the path with the farm vehicles. Then this fall, the far waste was dumped beside the path.
Next slide, please.
The waste pile was not cleaned up at the end of the season. The smaller phobos on the right were taken yesterday and can see surplus produce of carrots, pumples, chili peppers, and potatoes dumped with the plant rings. Also, rezoning rest species, in short, with the.
Next slide.
The farm seems to follow the market garden, and I focus because you look uh at the paperwork on the number first of twenty twenty one, at least it's signed by Jim Frank, president of the world records for River District of the lake. The tenant, Jim Frank, managed over this perfectly different market garden farm that was the city. So even though this is how the community garden tonight, and the definition in the proposal seems to fit market garden a little more thoroughly because it mentions the sale of cash plans. The farm um had been earlier draft limitations on building size, and the city's interpretation of what could be done there relied on sales volume and on site acreage. But these are missing from the current proposal. Where in the proposal are the individuals to be with neighbors?
Next slide.
A planning council member asked us, why do that? Are internal workers who have my own space not good? Unfortunately, internal work with some costs means no personnel then. Thankfully, the city of Other Side has helped us with that. But the resolved proposal will export the citizens to their own cycle. But I noted one here last time.
I'm sorry.
Um I've given you two examples on your own, it's like this.
I think, and if we can get those two slides to the council. Wow, that'd be great. All right, my name is Alfonso.
My name is Nata Sambra. I have the two zero one zero five one in Gatlin. I propose a change to our new open faith recreation district community in R E R open space. For the narrow from the acre, it lies in the end of the center. There's um by the greenway. Now the city park or commercial farm market, to this date, there is no detailed site plan, detailed finance narrative, or documentation that is substantive, as mentioned in the record. What is the justification from the rezone? Refer this full plan journal of this existed July twenty twenty three called verdict here. What Greenstone wants now is a fundamental change from the script of the land and the commercial zone. For example, hoop houses, greenhouse, and market stands and stored buildings throw up, and all they have to do is meet the bare minimum requirements of setbacks, height, and coverage. The developers currently agree with what he wants with the development of the agricultural commercial slash industrial business. The neighbors in the Glenberry area will not do any of the impacts of noise, visual, and smell from the waste generation. The developer has been mostly forthright with the farm. He did not communicate with anyone or try to get any collaboration from the neighbors prior to starting this farm. It appears there are two separate hoop houses behind my fence backyard and will be erected in the spring, nine feet high, fifty feet long and forty feet wide. Look what the beautiful things have to look at outside my twelve foot sliding glass door. The plant said the greenway will have pathway trails, community orchard benches, water farms, and craft acceptable set sign that recognizing cultural and agricultural history of the area. There are no things like that. There's uh hoop bags and hoop bag areas that need to be thrown back in. How so? In the proposed new zoning matrix, agricultural product craft, sales, stand, farmer market, it's not allowed in the current zone, but would be fully permitted in the new zone. Vote no. Mobile sales concessions are permitted on a limited basis in the current zone, but would be fully permitted in the new zone. Vote no. Public assembly is permitted on a limited basis in the current zone, but fully permitted in the new zone. Vote no. Seasonal special events are permitted on a limited basis in the current zone, but all fully permitted in the new zone. Vote no. An espresso stand in the permitted, not permitted in the current zone, but is fully permitted in the new zone. Vote no. Landscape supply greenhouse or commercial nursery is not permitted in the current zone, but is fully permitted in the new zone. Vote no. The new zone will add a permitted use of community garden, farm stand, market garden, urban agriculture. Vote no. Will ocean storage containers be allowed on a permanent basis, not temporary? If so, where will they will be, where will they be located? And they should have never been permitted. I have public health and safety issues as well. Will the city have to build restrooms for commercial activities? Will the fire department need fire hydrants? So who will install and who will pay? What will the fire department access? Will, will have a vote, will they need a vote uh needed to be put for access? Thank you very much. Let me have a nice evening. Merry Christmas and happy new year.
All right, it's something about Robert Hopkins.
Uh my concern tonight is with the development of Half Moon Park. There would be a possibility with the zoning change in the River District. Half Moon Park has been a breeding space for property owners and currently about half of the park is being used for stormwater treatment. Um all the stormwater in the River District and around the park is generated in transit to their culverts in the park for treatment by filtration and filtration into the aquifer. The first slide here is a picture of uh one of the stormwater treatment facilities, one of the structures. You can see it has a concrete turner, a pumping splash pad, half a dozen trucks. It's only a couple of inch deep, perhaps, and it limits the capacity for storing water. Next slide, please. This is the structure in the middle of the park during the rain event on November sixth. You can see the amount of water coming out of the center of the structure. This is water that came from Indiana western of the park. Next slide. This is another portion of that same swell. This is the pipe that comes out of whole bollamar and sends water from hole to the south of the park. Next slide. This is a another picture of the same swell, and you can see the uh full water. Next slide. This is on the northwest corner of the park. Next slide. And this is the southeast corner of the park. Two things you can see from the exploded tank on November sixth. First is the rain that overwhelms the structures. And the second is that the four culverts active culverts in the park are in dire need of cleaning. In conclusion, uh Half Moon Park is that a dedicated location for stormwater treatment in the zones around the River District. It's currently questionable whether it's needing this whole regional stormwater codes. My recommendation to this, I'm before any development in Half Moon Park, wanting to change the nuisance of the park is approved that a stormwater runoff plan, the evaluation of the stormwater system as a new in the park. If my other recommendation is to have these four culverts being confirmed before the spring runoff. There's a couple of other issues in the park, some other different structures and some if you put the current pipe, they go up the hole. But I don't have enough time in this, in this uh presentation to go into that. There's a problem in the park. Go and develop it and try to fix the problem.
Thank you. You have stuff?
I'm back at all. I mean, you know, I don't know where the right, you know, you can understand. Both the zoning change, I don't think it's necessary. I don't, I don't think they're gonna put it in place. I have a concern that you can't really give everybody much money you want to, right? Or what you like, you know, someone at odd if a new street. So the H E said in the report that it was hard to further opine on the new zone, it's actually quite difficult to accomplish the competition with community policy. So please, if you need to be deliberate, yes, we're about that. Because I believe that there's not, I don't believe in investing. I correct of activity, please, for five. We're concerned, I want to tell you that to make sure that you already know, you're on. Stop the taking down the symptoms, with a comprehensive plan, but to opposite in our part. If this is a route that stands with zoning. So if you want to approve this, it's based on that it's generally the two thirty of the comprehensive plan. Also, this is the blanky zone. It's only approval, so that's the version inside this. The crayons come out and the color changes on these streets before property. So this is part of the delivery, particularly the actual storming. Transition line corridor, nothing in park, river, lot, there are communities used for recreation purposes. If the council needs this zone, needs if necessary, one option for the new open space zone that can be removed in this regard, items associated with agricultural, market garden, storage containers, moving to living use, as a park, recreation, stormwater management. That would be in accordance with the common. Please note that the burden in your article is to tend to ground of business, July twenty twenty three. They stated that there are any practices to do, a commercialized agricultural investment on these properties, they're saying from their article, not for me, I'm in the preparation of dead. They want to grow the business. They want to build things that were other routes to feed us. So there's no connection, there's no factoring of the question between the timing of their article and the breadth of course to give the stone. So remember their last post, it said when the community understands what the space is, what's available to them here are businesses that only can grow a lot. The city of Liberty Lake continued us the P P twenty survey in park, the recreation was overwhelmingly length of the topic. Try out with a kid counseling in English.
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis Sheen.
Thank you. My name is Danny Chan, and I did look on a piece by my dad in the movie world. I won't go on a long presentation like some of my neighbors have, just to come up with it. That it's definitely not a community bond at the river park, river life park, you see that if you can, they accept the people individually to do. But Mr. Frank has gone ahead and done a virtual offer. And my feeling is that if he go ahead and prove it to the bulk that has support for it, it's now he will find that loophole, and he will expand it incrementally, and we go all over the distance. You know, I'm concerned for that. Even doesn't abide by its own roots, like my backyard, I wanted to put it in nine foot tall shed. I'm just like, hey, I was living to eight feet and ninety six foot. I have to lie by the ones white man. They set them up. I did, but I lied by. I say both no. Both no upon this change. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Madam Mayor, Council. Thanks for the opportunity to talk. I'm also opposed to this zone change. Um the staff report says that the zone change is unnecessary, and in the thing that the development is done. Then the question becomes, why are we pushing this so far for zone change? If all the things it needs to do doesn't require zone change, why would we? And I submit it being very well beaten, exactly what happened in middle. We were sold on the change in that zone by the fact that we were using the same words tonight, a place to gather a sensible. We were sold on the changing that zone by the fact that we were, as we use the same words tonight, a place to gather, essentially a place. That was how we sold it, that we were going to have mixed use with retail shops and so forth. I submit to you, they had that buyer in their pocket when they got us to make that zone change. And by the way, they passed by one vote in the plan commission. Well, there's more to this than what's being presented to us. If it isn't about the farm, why do you spend thirty minutes on the farm and ten minutes on every path? If it's only about the zone change, and if it is, does that mean that all these other parcels can be bonded as well? There is a law that says that when you sell your home, you must disclose if you live within one mile of the farm. Can you imagine if it's right behind your back door? The reason you have to disclose that is it, it affects the value of your property. So having one right behind your house is definitely going to affect your value. You would think that development in a city like this would be adding value to properties, not taking value away. And that's what this zone change would do. The other part of it is there is a law in the state, it's called the covenant of Friday's warning. It has to do with tenants and landlords. So if all of these homeowners were tenants, this would be illegal. But in fact, they are property owners, so it's not illegal. They are not an invited owner of their property, even though they're owners. If they were tenants, this would not be happening, that farm would not exist. So I urge you to vote against this. The other part of it is that these homeowners paid more for these lives because they were told that there would never be anything behind them. And yet, at first they got a mortgage, then they got a quote unquote community garden, and now they have a farm. And believe me, this commercial, the developer himself said that he wants to sell, he wants the farmer to be able to sell vegetables to local restaurants. As well, and I know there are people out of Idaho who are coming to buy vegetables there. So saying this is not commercial is just simply not true. It is very common. Thank you for your time, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Last, not weeks, oh, not two, it's Tom Sullivan.
Tom Sullivan for the district. I'm opposed to this rezoning. The neighbors have said over and over again. The issues that make this incompatible with our comprehensive plan. And either the hearing examiner in her comments stated this, that proposed rezoning is very unusual in this nature. And that the requested zoning classification has yet to be adopted by the city council. In other words, the cart and horse are in the wrong order. You're going to have to remedy that. She goes on to say, there's no specific site plan or development proposal being made at this time for any of the properties. In other words, this is a blanket rezon where if approved, any of the allowed uses and the proposed REO zone could be developed. So the question base, and I ask you to consider this in your deliberations tonight, why now? And who does this benefit? It in no way, shape or form benefits the neighbors in the River District that you have heard from. I don't live on Blenheim, but I've worked with them for over two years and they have been meanable. They have been willing to talk, but they were presented, I was presented with a, the difference between a community garden and a community farm, actually, it was just little parcels that can be, it is now a risk, it is now a commercial farm. And I only asked you to think of one other time and most of you were here when we made that decision. On the Meadowwood Tech Center, we were asked to change the zone and we were given a wonderful presentation and Jim gave a wonderful presentation tonight about what it would look like with his vision. It wasn't our vision. And it certainly is not the vision of Meadowwood and Rockville. They have two hundred and forty apartments put into an area that they were told was going to be a residential and a mixed commercial, walkable community with these amenities. By the way, none of those amenities and none of those things were promised during that time had occurred. All I can say is we cannot give race on benefit of the doubt on this. Until and unless there's a detailed plan that includes a neighbor's input, more honest and more transparent, I don't believe that we should consider this. And I ask you to not approve it.
And so one last call, is there anybody else here who maybe could bond this home?
No. You must have gotten stuck with somebody else.
I think that always happens. I don't get, I don't get, I don't get, you know, getting stuck. I'm not, you see that, they save the best for later. Thank you, Mayor, Council and everybody else here. You've heard a lot, you know, we are tired. We've been doing this since May or something, I don't know much about zoning, I do know that open zone would not work. I have a bread behind the farm, I have a bread behind the roof now. Who we was, Jay won't leave. Who we twice, Jay won't leave. I've admired you, we've been in this land and so have both of you. You didn't know the farm was coming. This is a good small garden. Then heard later, like months later, we heard that, oh, there's been community gardens. People in townhouses and people have a lovely backyard and we didn't, we planned it all day long. All right, so let's say you want to make this open. Where we live is gorgeous, it's beautiful, the parks are green, they're lushes, they've got lovely events going on there. The farm does not. If you make it open, it has to have some conditions. It has to have a few things to make us who have to live behind the smell, the sound of all the fans, the trucks, the equipment. The rats that come in, do you eat all that stuff you saw that, that beautiful slide that you showed from left over? In the summer, it's weed grown, it's mostly dirt, not that much farm. The dust, everything was terrible. Who's going to maintain it? Who's going to make it look as lovely as the area it's housed in? Right now, it's an eyesore. It's an eyesore, especially for those who have to look down on it, the trail people. Has to be contingency here. It can't just, you have a garbage heap like it is right now, or a weep in the summer when it's dry. Things have to change. If you do make it open states, then there has to be some conditions. What happens if there's a fire? There's no fire, like, there's no access to safety. Are all the buildings grounded? You know, you're going to have all these events, who's going to clean up, who's going to pick it up? And so the container people park, are they going to go up the hill? There's such problems that can be caused by this. But if you are going to do it, it has to be as beautiful as the other places we live that are around us. No dirt, no weeds, no garbage, no smell, nothing. Let us have the heat we want and that's why we live. Thank you. More for your time, happy holidays.
Thank you. All right, so I don't think anybody else got stuck, so I apologize for that. So is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment on the public hearing? Make sure we check online one more time. Follow up, check in online, get that knowledge or written, what kind of letter received, which came in from many Zerba and Don and Burns, which we shared with Council. Does it sound like there's anybody online, so if you want to, if there's, I think some more questions from the council, we can close it, but three years later.
We need deliberations, no, it's not, we have, now it's time for deliberations. So yes, questions, but then deliberations, unless come to decide that they want to put some deliberations in the thing.
I would, I would suggest that. Yeah, through deliberations portion. Again, what I do then, I'm just making sure that. If you know anything and I don't, in my experience, I would need, also I consider you need somebody that, that is wanting to optimize your business decision.
What, how about this limiting deliberations, instead of declaring that this is needed to, to be written for ten minutes?
These are urgency for the evidence, the ordinance did not come into effect of this, there's no way this is going to happen this year. What, the other development code and mandates specifically upon our amenities, practical, in terms of the year. The one exception was a comp even when it is zone change. It specifically says that that does not happen to campus in the downed year, so we're not bound by this year. I think the one, I think the one of the things, and then one, two things is, the liberation, we've got the, we have the creative record because of progress in the process. And so I need to say, we're seeing very specific findings, you know, conclusions that we need, that the community garden record is going to need a decision. And it may still be the decision of the executive in this.
Quick clarification in the comments, and maybe this, the question was shown. If, if this council heard the arguments, but then it changes, and my council, my mayor, my boss comes in. Can we still perceive what we have to do before the hearing? This is continuing this.
Issues, anything? And even if not, I would suggest you can, but I, and anybody who has missed any, a couple of comments, I guess, I'd like for that, to let us know if you see me. And so, I think my only limitation was, I was putting it up over my meeting, is that we had all these arrangements tonight. And then we didn't wait until, you know, after like a holiday, we took a long time to feel like, please, we, I'm looking now and then, it was so brief the information that I gave. And that we were to make the conversation. Yeah, that's a good, that's, I feel like that's a link, that's in the.
Yeah, I, by big favor, having some deliberations, the citizens have come here tonight and more cases, and send them emails and so. I think they're tired of talking about this. I think if you have a few comments around the diet, we can achieve that purpose of the deliberation.
I'm not hearing what you're saying to me with it, I'm sorry.
I just wanted, I have greater respect for the positive judicial nature of this action and provision for requirements, that's part of the decision. I would appreciate user guidance regarding the tax, census, positive judicial nature.
Yes, so first of all, I, and I can only do this in your packets and the staff report on page fifteen, I just recommend your finding. Now, the findings of that related to the procedural aspects of this. And how is, my recommended finding was, I believe, or the same was that, that the management issue, and that was that the fire seeking, he was, they were included on the comprehensive plan amendment, the zone change. That all covered in agency notice, the findings were met, encompassed in primary or in media, or notes, the application, the legal products, property, post on the site, on the right documentation. Of that, in the report, and I get in a little question to that. On the kind of, the public has provided the argument for growing the community's participation since this, there is no this, as I think, speak to the report, and it was. You know, lastly, that the public had arguments, specifically in comments, and justify a public review before the management issue, before the, before the, before the. And I'm getting also probably that, so that's, that's what I'm recommending is to the city council and to find his parents, and then to the scene. I'm not explaining to anyone, so. Okay, that's, so that's the first step. The second piece of this is criteria for consideration of deliberations as it relates to the content amendment and the changes to the development code. And those are again, specifically called out in the, in the, in the statements that we saw in your presentation regarding the condition. These are the proposed amendment, consistent with the complex, can be related policies. Has achieving economic, technological, or any of these conditions encouraged one, for the, for the, for the proposed amendment. Be compatible with the basic mandates or are the limitations that we're, those are, are the regulations that we make is compatible. So, but what would, what would, I'm sorry, this is for the long range, I'm sorry. Will the proposed amendment, maybe the technical application for so, if so, there is a direct amendment. Is the proposed amendment definite to the public good, is the proposed amendment, uh, uh, in the public address? And he seeks to specifically identify the criteria for the co-ad amendment, the, the, the content amendment. What would the six criteria, such an unusual idea, specifically with the comprehensive plan, is not that you're looking at public welfare, is, is one of the, is defined any. One, one finding is killing economic, technological, related conditions is a third modification. The finding that the amendment is necessary to protect the other, the finding the amendment is necessary to verify the central unit. You know, the finding the amendment is necessary to provide the, not necessarily address, if we want, and then we're identified with here. The amendment is found necessary by the, by the, by the public. So those are the, those are the specific criteria that we need to address, you know, deliberations for purposes of, of the, finding the fact and continuing to draw. The, the positive ratio. And then lastly, lastly, um, any criteria specific to positive legal undertaking? Demonstration confined to all applicable contracts, community policies, and the outside conditions. Where this criterion is not met, the comprehensive plan amendment shall be a prerequisite for the, that's directly eligible. Second one, the demonstration confined to applicable standards and criteria disco and other enforcement ordinances. And three evidence of achievements in the name of the community or the community systems in the comprehensive plan, the, the, picking up the burden of property, which is the subject of the applicable. General currency, the, 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 it's not one of the mine, you know, around the ten pro pages of current securities. Because the uses for the money properties, if they're already allowed in the municipal zones, the transportation currency was not efficient for so anything. Um, there's, there's something that we did okay after, kind of affecting us. But, so those are, those are the criteria that you, that needs to be considered as part of the deliberations, I would say, first of all. I would verify any of this, my contingent's, my eradication, based upon board deliberations, but the city council has to make this progress. I would love to hear anything that I can say about it. So let's start with procedural findings, and I think we can have those as a block, because I think they're straightforward and they are, they are head act. Like I said, I think the bigger problem is head act. That your party's going to be this completed and the proposed comprehensive amendment is on the change. They're all public, the agency, the fire, the agency, which requires them that, encompassed in primary, and in the ways of the application, the, the property is on the site. The public have provided the opportunity for the community's participation, and the public have the opportunity to send a written comments and justify a public period with the committee commission. Again, the family are the city council. Those are the four findings, to, to, to find the fact that I, I think. Do any of these motions go through or?
Megan, oh, wait. Madam Mayor, I want to recognize and agree in fact of that, the finding, the written, the, the, the threat.
Okay, first, no hitting, and then for the second, he just got a card. Any questions before I move to vote? Make sure, hold any, try to, just, yeah, so. Uh-oh, you know, is, no, again, he's still on, I don't see him. Make sure you don't miss any comments.
I don't see him in the meeting on either side.
Obviously, right now, we have five councilors. All right, so any, there's our questions on this item, if we're going to move to vote. Those in favor of removing the motion for the same. On, obviously, on those, and if you have to say so.
You know, um, criteria for consideration, deliberation, uh, there are things you can talk about, if you'd like to, like. You know, um, criteria for consideration, deliberation, uh, there are things you can talk about, if you'd like to, like, maybe go again. But, 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 John Wright, John Wright, he has a lot of criteria for the, the, the development code, and it's a criteria for the assumption. What is your question?
Are, it's only me, the bottom, that's a good one, but, um, all of them, and, and I think to go one by one.
One by one, I'll be saying one, but I, maybe we need to do one by one, that. Um, so, again, so John Wright, the criteria, okay. So, again, either criteria for the amendment, the comprehensive plan, and the derivative development code. So the first one is such amendment is or is not consistent with the common plan, is or is not that you need to put in public welfare. Comments?
I'll speak to the observation that, um, open spaces is own, is present in the city, but not in the district. And that open space has its own, something that the city is rare, has had as a tool to provide community and build the new land, certainly, as, um, direction, as the need for, um, the building of, of its own purpose, for.
Any comments? That's how it hurts. So in the presentation, and the documents that we have, in line with age fifteen, at eight point one, the buyer will make any quick, um, just somebody who thinks, but uh, it would like to, Zach, uh, um, maybe some preliminary committee think about whether there were conflicts with the comprehensive plan, where you missed, right, any from the slide, did you show, and? Yes, I identified what, what was the piece of conflict based upon comments and testimony. And, um, when you made the, made the recommendation on those activated amendment developing code. So, that, so again, this is, that, this staff analysis is very great, okay? So then when we're looking at voting on this, we are contributing for ourselves and our own votes, as to whether we feel like this is the only conflict with the government, yes, so you, so your, your charge here is to consider staff analysis, planning commission, recommendable, experience, recommendations, and recommendable to the, and the comments of the general public, and I feature one. You don't want, the comments, questions? That's, that's, I'm going to go here, question.
Yeah, so, from a definition standpoint, that meant over the public welfare, that, I don't know that we can get a definition for it, or that it's called welfare.
Is that, is that this, that, that, is that one, wait, I wonder. So this is, so this is, is the comprehensive, is the amendment, or is it not, comes consistent with the comprehensive plan? And is or is not that not the welfare, unfortunately, there is not, the definition, so if there's not a definition of the code, we go to the common meaning of that word, and so that is, again, that is, that is for you to judge, and, and, or exonerate on why you think it is or is not. Continue, pardon me.
Well.
Okay, sorry, I had.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just, uh, fine, you, you turn the page.
Yes, you have, you have the recommendations for planning commission, that are, they, and, and I'm wanting to clear, that they proposed amendments to the, 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 the development code, and that they felt that based upon that, those others there, but when, when their findings based upon revised, um, which, I will say, that the applicant, these testimonies, um, had suggested, he really was, um, there was a new application out there, so he was, he was as immediate as any of the, of the planning commission recommendation.
Well, this seems to me, when we're talking about the definition of welfare, obviously, since it's basically, uh, to ask the human what that is, I return to the facts of what the dictionary says, and it says, the state of the well, especially in respect to it works in happiness, well-being, or prosperity. And from my perspective, the folks who live in this area are not experiencing happiness, well-being, or prosperity, that's it. So, that would, that would be mine.
Lisa, um, the, the question that you're posing, okay, you want?
This is, I do not have the PDF and files on page, but it's page sixteen of the staff. It's page twenty-one of the pack, so.
So, the, 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 what the planning.
No, I'm only, no, representing, I, I, I have. For one one, one one, okay.
Which I don't, correctly, my mom, I don't really put a lot of, of happening, with what planning commission recommended, here is the criteria by which you.
Right, so, and the question we have, that is what the code says, to, to the criteria that we have to consider.
Now, I want to recognize that the planning commission recommended minutes to leave, um, we made the, that's what, I think the applicant here tonight also has asked that, that, but um, I guess as a step of acting, I might to have that from the proposal. To go on with consideration, to recognize what is excited as is or is not, we would need to act, you know, to move, no, or, 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 or.
That's the one that, um, Jim said, was removal of section ten point, part ten, two C dash three, and ten, two C dash seven, point C three.
Yeah, so, ten, at two, there's, three, is, is, is actually the section that deals with primary structures, the same prior section on primary structure, which, again, always the other structure, the, 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 I mean, it was you, that is not allowed, this, this sort of thing, and so, it's quite, 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 right. Anybody was talking about, you know, the storage containers, that way, in the, of building, um, with the only permanent wood structures, I don't know how, what they, that is. Well, so, so he's proposing, hasn't been approved yet, he, he, he has, he says, a building from that, he, the, 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 right now. Or, or with new structure, he clones the storage containers, and by the way, we do allow storage, I mean, we, 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 full screen. And so that's, so that's the question, with, 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 is, is this bad, maybe, maybe it's close. What else, but there's, but it's, so the storage containers can be made, but they can qualify with instruction. But then wasn't there also the question of, is this screening for the ones from it as well? Yes, but there's, there's other, there's other screening, there's other screening requirements for any type of storage, um, so then, I get, well, I guess, so that, I don't know, I recall a bit, I recall a bit, the, the, the open space, so, but the R V R, and R V M, R V C, those are required, first, they, they actually were given the design standards, such, including the result of this, so, so we are still clear on that. We, we still have this need, and storage.
I'll, um, make the margin, and, and the criteria, we have a, we have a value.
Okay, can you mention the second? So this is, where those two parts to that.
Uh, criteria one, or, or on the ball, could, yeah, that's it.
So, okay, so let me summarize that, so our, your system is clear, so is your motion to basically say such an amendment is not consistent? And is that criminal to the public? Is that what you're looking for?
Well, meaning that reads, as, it's gotta be both, because it says and, right? So, I would say, if it's not one, it can't be the other, as well, so my, my, um, proposal was that it be no. This thing is, it's a, it's a doubt.
It might be going unknown, okay, downstairs, okay, I mean, you're gonna need, is that, you got that, exactly? Oh, great, so, you're very special, that's all we got.
Can you just keep the finds of planning machines, for that, I said?
Yes, I. And we go back, there's, I, we have, there. There's, so, from the staff report, okay, um, the proposed amendment is consistent with comprehensive plan, and it is not that the public, well. So the motion is opposite of that. So then, I'm forward, and kind of, or I go, but I, that's all, then.
Just kind of reflect, again, on the ability of comprehensive amendments to establish trade zones, the definition of comprehensive, using the zone, are also part of the amendment, certainly.
So, it's, there are two legislative pieces of this, of the comprehensive amendment, and the development code, and the, and the surprise code, but you could, what, you could say that it's would separately, but what you can do is together. So if one is really complement, and developed code regulations separately, you know, what you can do is together. And I think that's how the committee, but aggressive.
My perception of the ability where happiness here revolves around the things, specifically what about, um, establishing the zone, um, to, was not creating conflict, or it's what is allowed in that zone, that is created, and the creation of zone in this case, may not, it has created happiness, um, it was being considered yes, I'm, I'm getting down to, what is the allowed lands, specifically?
So, so the finding, see, the planning commission, um, in their deliberations reached exactly the same conclusion, that they had to know what the development code was in order to, if on the other or not, to, to, and to, and comprehensive, the, the land use, was the one, sure, you don't know what the regulations are associated with it, how can you figure out, or do that means is or is not consistent with the, the comprehensive, that was what planning commission said. I'm usually generous in my paraphrasing, but I feel like the hearing examiner also said that, because effectively, what she, when she recommended the zone change, she recommended the development change. If you found that the development code, and I didn't swear, in that, and first said, if the comprehensive, if you found that the comprehensive plan amendment was, was a key. So you can't make a zone change decision, usually, until you figure out the complement piece of it, you know, because the comprehensive has to be consistent with the development code, and you can't make a decision on, on capability of the complement, unless you do a development regulation, or, you know.
I just, for example, suggest, if the definition of the open space is developed, precluded what's being considered as objectionable to the end system, you have a lot of fans in there. So, to me, um, the recipe for the definition was allowing the zone, is really part of that. Creation, establishing the zone, I think that's a good, but what is it that is allowed in that zone, appears to be a part of that.
No, no, exception, questions? Alright, so I'm just not hearing any, is that motion four, to, um, what, question A? Um, we answered this with such an amendment is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, and is the, the public welfare. I'm sure you say you got that, right? Also, you got that? Okay, um, so go ahead and take a vote, those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any votes? Alright, and then passes five zero. The second criteria is, um, the protection, the economic, technological, or the conditions of the current, the, the. No, please, what comments?
Can you give one of this, uh, by my, my, my information, then?
My information, I was, um, uh, well. Good, thank you.
Who, 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 who?
Who did you base your vote?
Well, the, the proposed amendment is not going to require any economic, technological conditions, same house. No.
If I'm telling the development and the previously undeveloped operating is a significant change in the environment. But the will try to create protections for open space, but has, well, the previously open spaces, whether they're long and going to be, um, is a change that needs to be best in the condition.
Yes, I know, but Jenny.
Based on that one statement, the statement of planning conditions, um, we heard a lot about the side of the difference, the problem, at least the government consider, and what we could actually consider that the, sort of the, the statement.
So again, the question is.
The land use conditions.
Now, because the land use conditions occur, but we want this change. And what the, the land use condition, you could relate it to the, these conditions that have been there. Anything else?
Uh, I guess the, the question for me has to do with, um, if, the defense statements made that if, uh, that if we move forward with these amendments, that it will somehow protect, uh, that land use that's currently in place in the green space, but my question is who, who is it protecting, um, pretty much from? If it's, if it's one developer that's developing this land, why are they, was it supposedly going to impose protections on themselves if, if their intentions are protect that green space?
I have a similar question, and I wish you to break this to the, add to questions, but I think that was one of my comments, you didn't even do the vote. Okay, uh, I think one of the comments was about protecting space, and that was a focus of a couple of the slides. Um, what I also hear from a few of the developers is that it seems to expand and reduce protections from that perspective. So really trying to understand what specific protections we are, how to achieve with this change, um, and I don't know if he's on or above that, not that question.
Thank you, Tim, thanks on Zoom, I'm so glad you're on, and participate.
Who?
Jim Frank.
Yes, Jim Frank is on.
Anyway, um, I don't know when, I don't know when it comes on the, can you, or do him back on, but I will note that he's here.
He's on, yeah, Mike is on.
Welcome, Jim. Um, he's on mute. Hi, Jim, did you happen to hear, um, the gentleman Curtis' question?
Um, it's all, the, um, the sound quality is almost impossible to understand, and the, um, the captioning is not accurate at all. So I can't honestly even understand what's being said or any of the questions that are being asked.
I'll have to try to repeat it and see if that helps. Um, Mr. Frank, my question was specific to protecting space. You have, you were talking in your presentation about one of the goals is protecting space. Um, the community has talked a little bit about their concern about it reducing protections. And so I wanted to know specifically what, um, and how the space will be protected if we make this zone change.
I, I just don't know if I understood, um, the question all because the volume is, um, the quality of the audio is just terrible, and I'm actually using headphones.
Okay, I think, my, my screen keeps freezing up. Uh, maybe we'll see something.
I'm wondering if, um, if this thing, I had a question, is that, and that way you can see it.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, so, okay, so we're going to go ahead with any other questions, but Jim, we're going to have, um, House number first, put her, um, question into the chat. Hope you can understand what I'm saying.
Okay.
And then, so we'll circle back.
One more, a lot more than I have to do that. It seems to me, again, just reading that question, it, it says, has it changed in economic, technological, or land use conditions? So when I read that question, I would get asked, one of the three, because it says or, now that it said and, obviously, then would be offered, but, you know, I, I think as long as they qualify for one of the three, then that one would be appropriate to proceed with a yes, but.
Well, and I don't, and maybe I'm reading that differently than others. Um, to me, I'm reading, okay, so what's the overall economic, technological, land use conditions around where this property is, and has that changed? So if you just, maybe if you're in session, nobody's building new homes or something like that, you know, would be the change in the economic conditions of, we can't sell the lots for, for, for homes, so now we have some stuff to do upon. That's how I'm reading it, maybe I'm a footy offense. That's, that's exactly, that is exactly the finding, the, 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 the kind of concept, so this is, uh, again, it's, so I think it's challenging though, is that this is a master plan, the, the River District S A P called out as being open space, regardless of what their zone, they are open space, they are, they are owned by the homeowners association, they are subservient, subservient rats that are collectively owned by the owners, the, the, the different, and, um, uh, they, would it be possible that it's been sold and, um, sold for development? I don't know, I, you know. I wasn't meaning to make a specific reference, but you know, if, if, if they wanted to, you know, really big recession and things change with regards to development, a law and the, that's, that's really one of his big findings, too. But, and again, I guess my point is that this is still very much consistent with the natural community, the, 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 the land as it's, that being developed, we've developed it's a, that's it. Well, um, looks like we got, um, Jim, he's ready to respond, get, yeah, if he has a question, we'll go back to the council comments. Go ahead, Jim, you are on mute, so we can hear you just now, there you go.
I, I understand the question that's being asked, and the, I think I tried to address this in my testimony, the neighbors and the comments that you've heard tonight, they're expressing, um, their concerns about the operation of the community gardens and the farm, and, and they're expressing concerns about, you know, visual appearance and noise and so forth. But that is really unrelated to the zone change. The zone change is, um, an attempt to create an open space zone so that these open space and park areas would have an open space zoning rather than a residential or a mixed use zoning. We believe that that protects those open space areas by reducing the range of uses that are permitted and creating more restrictive development standards that have to be met. And by, um, limiting the, um, possibility of any future redevelopment of the property. So we believe that that open space zone is accomplishing the same purposes that an open space zone that you have in the city accomplishes. The open space zone isn't permitting any sort of an expansion of the, um, well, call agricultural uses that are happening on the property. Those are already permitted on the property. We don't have any intent in expanding those. Um, they're, the vegetable gardens are on less than an acre of land, they're not going to be expanded. The orchard is on about the same amount of property. It's theoretically possible that the orchard could be made a little bit larger, but we don't have any interest in doing that. Um, in the future, it's possible that, um, instead of having a manager, uh, manage the vegetable beds and so forth, that that all could be converted to a, um, community garden very similar to what the city does or what we do, for example, at, um, Tretina, where the beds are made available simply to people that live in the community, and then they use the produce for their own benefit. So if there's any change, it would be in that direction. Um, this is our intent, like I expressed, is for this to be a community amenity, and there's different forms, I suppose, that that community amenity could take in the future as time evolves and circumstances evolve and so forth, but it's not going to be any bigger than what it is now, so.
Yeah, I did, but I, that led to this one other question that was based on what Mr. Frank said earlier, because he talked about as the project gets larger, but then I'm also hearing him say the project is not getting larger, so I'm just wanting to be clear on whether the project is staying as it is today, or if there are plans to expand based on articles that are provided with, and then the testimony that was provided.
If you're asking me a question, I couldn't.
If you could type it back in while she's doing that, I think House number, and some of the, comments.
So I'm going to try and take that practice, protection consideration. Um, we said in the current R D R, allow the women to, 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 to property, or, because of, under the code R D O, is that allowed?
No, it's not.
So the concept, the elimination of housing as a, I consider a protection in the purpose of this. I'll access untoward vision of the future in which a homeowner association, I'll consider them the most proposed part, property, a homeowner's association, private property, decides that the expense of that is ours, and decides to sell it for the purpose of housing. Um, if we were to have an open space zone, that would not be allowed, it's true, under the current zone, it is. So that's an example, well called protections, of ordering this definition of a, a.
Answer.
Uh, I wanted to speak on a topic, on a similar vein. Um, if, if the, the current green space zones are subordinate current to the H O A River District, um, we, we're hearing from members of the H O A that they want to look at a green space. Um, so in my mind, looking at the changes, really, um, the developer doesn't necessarily want to come in and redevelop those green spaces, but it is changing the allowable uses on those green spaces, and I think that's the question.
If you answer your question correctly, uh, has it changed in economic, technological, or land use conditions currently wanted to be broken, and say no. That's, that's the start of this, this portion of this discussion. Then, then, you dealt with that question, you, you, you're all three different aspects of the question, so only one of them needs to be applied, right? Is that correct?
So, yes, um, the present change in economic, technological, or the, 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 and we have been, has occurred, the, the minister, it is a gamble.
But we haven't changed the, 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 yet.
But we haven't checked both companies, but if there is a change in economic, technological, or land use conditions, the minister is, that it's not, the, 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 the conditions. No, I, I think that was the motion, wasn't it?
And we.
You know, should have.
Take it there, I broke pictures in, I wanted to, so we've lost a lot of people, and we thought that the, 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 the split, because we've got a lot of kids here, and so, go ahead and give me any information.
I'm making a motion to, um, answer the question, has it changed in economic, technological, or land use conditions, or do you want a proposed amendment? The answer is no.
First motion, and second.
Second.
Second, we can turn to the article, for questions, not hearing any, all those in favor, um, approving, um, the motion on four, please say aye. Oh, four, okay, hold your hands, I was trying to get, in favor. Um, I, yeah, I need to get my, so that three in favor, those opposed, one, two, Mr. Kennedy, real quick, if you have, since I can't see, you can weigh in on your, your vote on this
Uh, Madam, Madam Mayor? Can you hear me?
I can.
I, yeah, I apologize, I just took it off mute. The challenge is, is that I agree with Mr. Frank, the audible is absolutely terrible, I, I cannot follow the conversation, so I need a stain on this vote.
Okay, so that brings, three, two, all right, motion passes. So with that, um, three in favor, two opposed, and one I say. House number four.
Um, can I make a motion to, um, delay or move on to the agenda to, uh, number seven, and come back to, to this, um, that has thirteen, or has one five?
Maybe the motion on four, second, from Curtis, so you in favor, you say aye?
Aye.
I mean, we're, we're, take the, four, zero, yes, five, zero, five, zero, all right.
Mayor, before you go there, um, Lisa, I think you don't have, have an actual quote of the public hearing, to, 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 to deliberation.
No, so what, what we, we need to, we need to, we need to, to, uh, find that, which I think is, is like.
It's a, it's a.
Oh, thank you, all right, so, please, I mean, this way, it's me, I'm, but.
Looks like it.
Okay, sorry, Bob. Well, do, do you want to do this real quick, let me, um, let me tell the video, remember the effects. You're welcome, explain what you're, you're, you're. All right, so, um, I'll give a, come to my phone real quick, just explain, and sorry, we lost, I'm going to stand in the, um, wait, Sam, the things that donation every year are part of the contract, the lottery to other, um, entities, uh, of the city, and before COVID, we used to do this every year, and COVID came, and then we forgot back to it in person, so we wanted to honor that tonight, um, so I was hoping that you, you know, Sam, he's not here, can you run through where those funds are being donated?
Well, we appreciate, uh, uh, Mayor, the Council, and Mayor, appreciate the, uh, recognition and, and distributing these funds, uh, from, which, uh, management, uh, through community service, uh, entities such as lottery, uh, which does service projects within the community, um, two of our biggest ones is Grand Ride and the, uh, Memorial Day Breakfast Day, it's celebrated, it gets bigger and bigger every year, we go, a nice commemorative tribute to the fallen out of the, of the, in part, so, uh, those are, uh, part of that for us, and then we distribute that check as a part of one, two, three, to other, um, members of the community, or, Juanes, uh, the, uh, friend of the, uh, library, the, uh, community theater, and, uh, there was, uh, there was a couple other, I don't have the list right in time, but we distributed, uh, even the, amongst those, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you for, for hearing with us, and for being with us.
Oh, it's, thank you, something, actually.
Thank you, too. Uh, there's no, if, if there's no objection, I, I'm going to see if I can, please, Department Awards, to announce, I am, and we will, we will, please, you know, with City Academy, may it post. All right, E D, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're, we usually go around one by one, and Heather, and have you all at the same team, after each award, we're going to wait in one big line at the end, if that's okay,
About there, members of the council and citizens of Liberty Lake. It is my honor to present tonight the twenty twenty-three Liberty Lake Police Department Award. Each award is presented to recognize and celebrate the outstanding achievements of our police officers, agency staff, and citizen volunteers who have gone above and beyond their call of duty. As we, we begin this ceremony, I would like to take a moment to express lots of sincere gratitude to every one of our officers, agency staff, and citizen volunteers for their unwavering dedication towards serving our community. We are proud of them as they continue to set an example for others by demonstrating exceptional professionalism, integrity, and compassion in everything they do. It is through their hard work that the citizens of Liberty, and Liberty Lake can trust that the community is protected by some of the finest law enforcement professionals in the country. Their selfless service deserves recognition, and tonight we will honor them with awards that reflect their current dedication. And without further ado, let us begin to present our awards. First, it's my honor to present the Citizen Award to John Michael Harris. This award recognizes individuals who have demonstrated exceptional dedication and commitment to their community by volunteering their time, skills, and resources to support our agents. John Michael's contributions to our agency and our community include regularly sitting on all boards of police officer applicants and prospective police hires, department, department promotional assessment boards, and donating beverages and food on behalf of his employer for department special events. John Michael's contributions have been super valuable in helping the agency hire many of the five men and women on our team today, and for the success of many of our department events. Joining and thanking John Harris.
Maybe I missed it, did you say the, who the employer is? I obviously know, but.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
All right, it's my pleasure to present the next award. So this next award's been a long time coming, uh, he's been here with us for a while. It's a service award for somebody that's leaving us and I hate to see him leave, uh, but this award is to recognize one of our reserve officers for his years of service in our organization. Dan Wilson came to us in two thousand fourteen as a reserve officer from the city of Spokane, and he worked on every extra detail we had during that timeframe. He went through the F D O program to become single car status, which not a lot of reserves actually do, and then he always was willing to come in when we needed to add extra help. You could always see him at the farmer's market, you could see him at each one of the different events, you could see him during the yard sales, he was always there. Dan didn't get paid as a reserve, but he still came in for train, every training session, which included every weapons qualification, E B O C training, active shooter response training, TASER research, access training, and so on and so forth, all while maintaining his current job status and make, making everything work so he can come in and work for our department. Dan was a great asset to our department and will be missed, but other commitments haven't pulled away from us, but we wish him the best of luck in his future endeavors. Dan Wilson. Dan Wilson.
I would like to add that, uh, a couple of weeks ago, Dan called me and I got excited because I was like, he's coming back. And, uh, he informed me that he's running for Cooney County Sheriff, so.
Nice.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, so I'm going to be doing the Sergeant's Award. The Patrol Division is the backbone of the Liberty Lake Police Department. They work 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, policing services to the citizens, businesses, and other resources and entities here within the city of Liberty Lake. We place our highest value on the preservation of human life. We believe in the prevention of crime as our first operational priority. We believe we must involve the community in the deliver, uh, delivery of our services. We believe we must be accountable to the community we serve. The Liberty Lake Police Department believes in a total commitment to professionalism in all aspects of our operation, and most importantly, maintain the highest standards of integrity. To be honest with you, our agency is full of amazing men and women who leave these values every day when they put the uniform on. I'm proud to not only call them my team members, but family. We spend a lot of time together away from home. Though decisions can be difficult when it comes to awards, this one was pretty simple. On behalf of myself, Sergeant Jones, Sergeant Bogan Reef, and Sergeant Holhouse, we've selected Officer LaRocco for this year's Sergeant's Award. Officer LaRocco is a dedicated team member who felt, who we felt is committed to his work, dependable to cover open shifts so that our team members are not working alone, and is always willing to step in and help the detectives when it comes to investigating and solving cases. Every day that Officer LaRocco walks through the doors of the P D, he is ready, he has a ready to work attitude. Officer LaRocco is well known to work a case until there are absolutely no further leads. He takes pride in being thorough in everything he does, and we appreciate it. So thank you, Officer LaRocco, for all your hard work. We look forward to next year.
Next award is something simple that we haven't done for a long time, or actually never done this award. It's called the C O P Award. The Community Oriented Policing Award is new to the department this year. This officer was responsible for training several active shooter classes in the Liberty Lake community. He put together all the training criteria along with training aids to keep the community aware of what they should do in case of an active shooter. Corporal Sewell, along with his officer, Irvin, presented this class to over a hundred community members in three different classes at the P D and also one to a business within the Liberty Lake community. Thanks for helping keep our community members aware and safe in times of crisis. Corporal Sewell.
Nice. Congratulations.
Our next award is the Chief's Choice Awards. Now, serving as a detective myself for seven years was undeniably one of the most fulfilling responsibilities I had in law enforcement. Simultaneously, it proved to be an immense test of my abilities. As Agatha Christie once wisely stated, detective work often entails eradicating, eradicating false starts and commencing anew. This quote merely scratches the surface of what this line of work truly demands. Despite grappling with a substantial caseload, detectives, Jordan Bowman and Matt McKay, have fearlessly confronted every challenge that comes their way, triumphing over any obstacles standing between them and justice. Moreover, both Detective Bowman and McKay have dedicated countless hours to training to enhance their effectiveness and expand their knowledge within their field. Their unwavering commitment has resulted in consistently successful, uh, case resolutions in criminal prosecutions. They're not here tonight, but I will present them with, uh, this award, um, as soon as we can. The next award is the Outstanding Service Award. Presented to Corporal Derek Arnold. I'm honored to present Corporal Derek Arnold with this, with the Outstanding Service Award for his outstanding work in obtaining new handgun platforms for our entire department, developing the firearm, firearm training curriculum, and certifying all officers in the use of the new platform, as well as in providing firearm range instruction and certification for all officers. Corporal Arnold has demonstrated exceptional leadership skills by taking on this project and ensuring that every officer in our department is equipped with the necessary tools and knowledge to perform their duties safely and effectively. His dedication to this project was nothing short of remarkable, and it is a testament to his commitment to serving our community. The importance of proper firearms training cannot be overstated. It is essential that every officer knows how to handle their weapons safely and accurately. This not only protects themselves, but also ensures the safety of those around them. Corporal Arnold's tireless efforts have ensured that every officer in our department has received top-notch training, and I do mean top-notch. We have laterals from all over the country, as all of you know, and every one of them, including myself, said that, that two days, that sixteen hours we spent on the range was the best range time that they have ever had in their career. And this undoubtedly leads to better outcomes when it comes to public safety. I present Corporal Arnold, the Outstanding Service.
All right, this next award's another new award, and he doesn't know what's coming either, so that's always a good thing. So on this next award, we call it an Excellent Some Leadership Award. This is new award this year as well, but I felt like the work Jeff Isaac did, or Sergeant Jeff Isaac did in his leadership development needed to be recognized. Sergeant Isaac is the kind of guy that puts his heart and soul in everything that he does. He never accepts mediocrity from his officer and does the best to always set a positive example. He created a leadership book for each one of our sergeants and corporals to have with them during emergency situations. One that provides a quick guide to let them know what needs to be done and who to contact in various types of different situations at all times. He completed over three hundred hours of leadership professional development this year alone. He received his first level supervision in July of this year and just put in for his mid-level management certification through C J T C. Some of those classes include, include the FBI Lita Trilogy, both in-person and online, two separate courses. The Twenty First Century Leadership Development Course, the Supervising Critical Incidents Course. And in addition, Sergeant Isaac completed all of our required training that was required through C J T C, along with some not due until 2028. For his dedication and excellence in leadership, Sergeant Isaac.
And now I'd like to present to you our Officer of the Year, Jordan Tuttle.
Tuttle is, no, I call him Tittle.
Allow me to present an extraordinary illustration of the exceptional work carried out by Officer Jordan Tuttle. Joining our agency in February of this year after transferring from the Benton County Sheriff's Office, his dedication to public safety and our community has been resolute since day one. It comes as no surprise, given that he was raised right here in our community. But what exactly does his unwavering commitment entail? He has conducted a staggering four hundred and six traffic stops. His efforts have resulted in apprehending twelve individuals driving under the influence of alcohol. He has issued a total of ninety-five infractions for those tra, for traffic violations. He has written thirty-eight criminal citations. In addition to all of these accomplishments, he has contacted suspicious vehicles on eighty-nine occasions. And with, uh, he's contacted, uh, suspicious persons on forty-eight occasions. Lastly, but certainly not leastly, or not least, but importantly, Officer Tuttle arrested suspects involved in domestic violence, incident, domestic violence incidents eleven times. Now, these, uh, stats represent only a portion of his achievements thus far and do not include data from his initial months of field training. The remarkable dedication displayed by Officer Tuttle towards safeguarding our community has garnered significant attention, and tonight we aim to pay tribute to him for playing such an instrumental role in fulfilling the mission entrusted upon us as an agency. I present to Officer Jordan Tuttle, Officer of the Year. And thank you, Council, Mayor, um, and thank you for your continued support, and thank you, everyone, citizens, for your continued.
Thanks, all of you for your patience tonight. Okay, we're going to move on to City Academy Recognition.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think that we have, uh, a couple of folks here that are going to be able to pick up certificates of recognition. As, as the council know, this is, knows, this is our second round of the City Academy. We had a spring class, this was our fall class. We had, uh, twelve folks enroll, and we had about ten of those coming consistently. And so tonight is the culmination of eight weeks of, uh, just kind of dialogue between the city, its partners, and residents who decided they wanted to learn a little bit more about how the city operates and makes decisions. And so, um, we have, I'm going to read the list of names of folks that went through, and then I'll call up the, the folks that are here to get their certificates. We had Rob Chase, David Clay, Kim Gerard, Scott Gerard, Michael and Nicole Hamlet, uh, Eugene Heischel, uh, Councilmember Kennedy, Chris Merkel, and Bill Norman. And so those that are here, I'm going to call them up alphabetically. David Clay, uh, come on up and get your certificate of recognition.
Hi, first slide.
Oh, all right.
It's going to be the very last.
It will be.
There we go.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Dave. And one of our goals of having folks go through the academy is to get themselves prepared possibly to be, be a volunteer on a board of commission. We've had two from this class that have, that have, uh, applied. So, uh, we, we can, and, and a couple of that were already on boards and commissions, so we count that as a su, uh, success. So our next, um, graduate is Scott Gerard. Uh, Scott, come on up and get your certificate. And he's going to pick up Kems as well, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And we lost our official photographer. David is not here tonight, so we are, we are not taking photos. We can get some of those later. And then our last certificate tonight is, uh, Mr. Heischel, Gene, come on up and, and get your certificate of recognition.
We're going to hopefully welcome Gene to the, uh, reading commission when the confirmation gets to the agenda.
That's a surprise for later. Thank you, Gene. All right, so based on the feedback that we got from not only this class, but the earlier class, we're probably going to make some adjustments and then look forward to a spring of 2024 delivery and get some more folks in and hopefully build this, uh, group of ambassadors that we're calling them once they've graduated to be able to go out and recruit other folks and to be able to get interested in the city and some volunteer opportunities that exist. So thank you again for bearing with us for all eight weeks. Thank you for coming tonight and, uh, staying to get your certificate, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thanks again, Council.
And I also want to thank all, thank all the staff who took time out of their evenings to come and help, help teach the classes. Lisa and Amy and Jen and Kyle and Jandy and of course Mark, was there a re, what?
Chief Simmons.
Yeah, and, and chief and deputy chief. So thank you to all of them, and thank you to our partners as well. Hey, changing microphones. We are, I guess, up to Councilmember Recognition, and we lost one of them. Better to do this from up here. So we'd like to recognize Councilmember Foliar, Mayor Protem, for the last two years for his, um, amazing four years of service on the council. And I'd be remiss if I didn't also recognize again his, uh, his work on the Planning Commission, um, for a number of years, as well as being, uh, the chair of that commission. And, um, I understand he did a fabulous job there, so I was really excited to get him on the council. Um, so this will be Phil's last meeting. Um, we're sorry to see you go, but we're looking forward to you being continued involvement in the city. So just kind of keep an eye out on, on the commissions and see what you might be interested in. You've brought a great perspective to things on this council that we hadn't had before, given with your experience and, and development in home building. So we, we really appreciate that. I think there are definitely things that you brought to the table over the last four years that we probably wouldn't have thought about asking, and that, that's always appreciated. So I'd like to recognize Phil, if you come on up. Will present you with your Eagle Award. Hopefully you've got a spare shelf somewhere to put that in, and, um, we really appreciate you being.
Thank you.
So if anybody has some stories they want to share about Phil before we go, we will, we'll take that opportunity too. And of course, the other one was Sir Councilmember Solberg, and he escaped, so we'll get that to him. Yes, we are up to, um, now employee recognition, so I believe each of the department heads are going to do, um, uh, their service awards.
So actually, I'm going to field this one. We, we have a handful of folks, and I think we have two of them here. And so, um, I just wanted to let council know that we are up to, uh, about a hundred employees, and that's split between full-time and part-time and seasonal. But we're, we're just about at the threshold of a hundred. And so if you look back over the course of 2023, and I think the evaluations will bear this out, and the department directors can attest that as they went through those conversations, there was some very productive work that was done, and you've all seen that and heard about it as we've come before you twenty-some-odd times this year. Um, there would just simply not be a way to achieve the things that we have set, um, our, our aim on, uh, that, that you all have set our aim on during the course of the year without the hard work and dedication of each and, and every individual in this organization. And so it, it, I, I want to recognize everyone. We're not going to be able to do that by name tonight, but all one hundred-ish, um, deserve recognition for the hard work, dedication, and just contribution that they make on a day-to-day basis. But what we're here to do tonight is to recognize those that have hit those service milestones that are essentially five-year increments, right? And so, um, starting from the top, um, we've got Sergeant Jeffrey Jones from the Police Department. He's not here tonight, um, but Sergeant Jones, uh, has, he, he's a, he's a member of our Police Department and, and does great work. Um, and so we'd like to recognize his ten years of service. Troy Smith from our, uh, pro shop, he's a golf pro out there. He works for Chris Johnston. Um, Troy is not here tonight, but he's one of the guys that gets you set up with everything you need when you go out to the pro shop. Um, and so another, uh, fantastic team member who's just hit his tenure mark. And then going from five years, and sorry, I, I broke my, my promise, but, uh, one of them is Kelsey Hardy, our, our city clerk. We would not be able to run our meetings. We would not be able to do the administrative work that we do on a day-to-day basis without Kelsey's hard work and commitment. And so if we can stop. Kelsey's hard work and commitment. And so if we can stop and give Kelsey a round of applause.
I'm actually appreciative of that, and it's going to be
thoroughly embarrassed, and I'll hear about this tomorrow. The other one that we have with us tonight in the audience is our Planning, Engineering, and Building Services Director, Lisa Key. Lisa is also hitting her five-year threshold tonight, and again, we wouldn't be able to do any of the things that we do and make the decisions that we make and keep on track with respect to our comprehensive plan and our development standards and engineering design standards without Lisa and her meticulous attention to detail and the way that she, the way that she manages and, and leads her staff. So Lisa, congratulations. And then lastly, we have Jonathan Finn Thomas, who is hitting his five-year mark tonight. He is one of our operations and maintenance workers. And I have to tell you that with the heat of the summer, the cold of the winter, the snow, the rain, the conditions, these guys are out there and, and ladies are out there every day, operating equipment, making sure that our streets are passable, our trails are passable, our sidewalks are not going to get us in trouble when people walk on them. They, they maintain our parks, they maintain the golf course. And so our city looks the way it does in large part because of all of the folks on the operations and maintenance team, but in particular folks like Jonathan that are just coming to work every day, making sure that Liberty Lake is the community that we all want it to be. And so we want to appreciate his work, all of their work, Kelsey's work, Lisa's work, Jeff's work, and Troy's work, and hope that they remain on our team for years to come, and we can recognize them again later on down the road. But thank you for the opportunity to point that out, and appreciate it.
All right. We'll jump next to reports and inquiries. First up is City Council. If anybody has a any comments to make from City Council or reports. Councilmember Dunn.
Just that we enjoyed elected essentials. I guess we could go. That's great.
Right. All right. Anybody else? Some City Council reports? All right, not hearing any. I will make mine fairly brief, though this will require an action. So I'd probably want to wait for Councilmember Cargill to come back. Can we, can we jump to, jump to you, Mark, and we'll come back to mine?
Sure. So on events and reminders, we've got the library Christmas party coming up on Thursday at the library, starting at six P M. Just as a reminder, next Monday, Christmas Day, December twenty-fifth, City Hall and Library will be closed in observance of that holiday. Winter Glow Spectacular goes through January first. And then as, as hard as, as it is to believe, we are going to roll into twenty twenty-four and observe the New Year holiday a week from this Monday on January first. And again, the City Hall and Library will be closed in observance of that. Any, any questions about those? And so moving on, I'm gonna skip two, I'm sorry, I'm gonna skip three and four because they're not time-sensitive, but we distributed the department reports and now want to give council an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have based on those reports.
Just one real quick question, Mark. In January, when, when we get our department reports in January, can we also get a year-end report as well on just what the tax, tax collections were, all the statistical data?
Absolutely.
If we have it by then?
Typically, we, that's not ready till February because there's still a whole lot of stuff being done for December.
And, and we'll go through a, a closing period in, in January, but as soon as we have a year-end close, absolutely, we'll provide that. And then Kyle will also schedule a, a year-end review financially for the council during the, during the meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the reports? Okay, so item number five, and, and really what we want to do here is, is give you this information so that you hear it from us first as this unfolds. And we've got, as you know, the Driving Range project out at Trailhead. We're gonna be replacing the poles and nets. And because of that, we're gonna have a construction zone that is set up out here. And as a result of that, it's going to cause us to need to close the sledding hill for a period of time that that construction project is underway. It looks like we're going to get started January, first couple of weeks in January-ish, and so we're looking at a six-to-eight-week project period, so a six-to-eight-week closure of that hill. Know it's disappointing for people who like to go out and slide when there's snow, but it's really unavoidable considering the lay-down area that has to be preserved for the project with the, the poles and the netting and all the construction activity that's going to happen. Did I miss anything? Yeah, and, and Mark, because Mark would be out there sledding in the construction zone. Any questions?
So I've seen the markers going along about halfway down that hill. That'll be temporary fencing then for the purpose of the project?
Yes, they've, they've also gone out and marked all of the irrigation as well, so guys will be getting.
But yeah, it'll be fencing and closing that area surrounding the driving range.
Right.
And I will come back and brief you on items three and four to later time. Like I said, they're not time-sensitive. So Mayor, that concludes my report.
Okay, great. So the, the main thing I want to address in my mayor's report, and I'm sorry it didn't get, it didn't go on the agenda because I just got the email on it yesterday. So Councilmember Dunn has been our representative on the S T A Board this, this year. He's done a great job reporting back, attending the meetings, having meetings with some of the other, other board members as well for collaboration. So it's time that we appoint, we need to appoint someone for twenty twenty-four. We also need to appoint an alternate. This needs to be by council vote. My request would be that we have a motion to reappoint Councilmember Dunn for twenty twenty-four, and then, then we can talk about an alternate. Daniel, just wanna give us a quick synopsis on your, what you've done this year and what you hope for next year if we get reappointed.
Sure. S T A is one of the most successful transit agency of its size in the nation. It's an agency that operates with a considerable bank account and, and say, in the black consistently. The board, I think, is an effective group that provides observations and directions through the C E O to the staff. It's been an honor and privilege to listen in to how some of that, that decision-making is made, and I'd be honored to continue to support that group.
Right. Unless anybody would be chomping at the bit to, but it says, it would be good, you know, for and so we also have to appoint an alternate, so somebody, you know, to come behind and be able to fill in if Dan can't make it and kind of get, get their, get their feet wet on that. So I'm happy to entertain a motion to reappoint Councilmember Dunn or somebody else.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Councilmember Dunn to the S T A Board.
Thank you. We have a second. Second. We have a second by Councilmember Kurt. So any discussion, questions? Right, not hearing any. All those in favor of reappointing Councilmember Dunn to S T A Board for twenty twenty-four, please say aye. Okay, thanks, Mike. I heard you. So we've got motion passes six-zero. Now, who is interested in jumping in as alternate? I know Councilmember Kennedy, you've been on the board before. I don't know if you're interested in being the alternate, or if there's anybody else here who is interested.
Well, since she's not here, perhaps Councilmember-elect Ball would be interested.
She's right here.
No, I meant, I meant not on the, on the council yet.
Oh.
Meaning that she doesn't have a vote, so we can appoint her.
You're gonna get voluntold.
I'll make a motion.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. I'll let him oppose. This is not the right time to do it.
So do we have anybody interested in being the alternate? Councilmember Kennedy, are you interested in taking up a spot?
Thank you. No.
Okay, I know you've been appointed in the past, so I wanted to run it by you.
I can do it.
I appreciate that.
No problem. All right. So it looks like Councilmember Cargill is interested in being the alternate. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move to point. Cargill is alternate.
All right, we have a second. All right, we have a motion and a second by Councilmember Spencer to appoint Councilmember Cargill as the S T A Board alternate for, for for Liberty Lake. So those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Myself? Yes, you can.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes five, six, six, zero. Holy cow. Kelsey, we need to get that in writing to S T A, so I'll forward you that email with a contact on it. Oh, actually, you were on it. I haven't yet. Okay. All right. Thanks for that. Just a couple of quick little things. Mark and I attended the G S I Legislative Session last week. Seems like forever ago. Time flies, but a really good session. We had the, the ranking members of, oh gosh, the majority leaders from the Senate and from Republican side, right? Who all was there.
So floor leader for the minority.
Yep.
The majority leader in both houses.
Yeah, there you go. That's what I was trying to say, but it wasn't coming out. So no, it was a really good session. I highly encourage everybody to go when it comes back around next year. It really, really a discussion about collaboration and working together. So it was, we're, we're hearing a lot of that this year. I don't know how many people are actually working toward that, but at least people have that on their mind. Been so much negativity all around the country. So hopefully, hopefully we can have some more collaboration and during the short session this coming year. And then last but not least, so I've been in contact with Jay from Spokane News. I don't know if you guys follow Spokane News on Facebook, but he also does Spokane News scavenger hunt. So he and I are meeting tomorrow night, and there will be some gift cards hidden somewhere in Liberty Lake to, just a promotion for some local businesses and to get people out there. So keep an eye on, on Spokane News scavenger hunt page. And so he and I will be out in the cloak of darkness trying to, to hide some of these things. So kind of fun, fun activity to end the year. So that's enough for me for a mayor's report. Library Board. Thank you for your patience as well, ladies.
All right, we have our quarterly report from the, the Library Board, and Jandy and I'll be presenting on that. First thing up is on November ninth, the Library Board updated the customer service policy. It was a four-page policy that had a lot of sort of staff do's and don'ts, which really didn't belong in the library policy. That was more employee handbook or city policy handbook. Yeah, the city employee handbook, and it's, it's pretty much all covered there anyway. So it's shortened now to a paragraph that the Liberty Lake Municipal Library places a high priority on ensuring that all people have access to library services and resources in a safe and welcoming environment and are treated with courtesy, fairness, and efficiency. The same quality of service is provided to all patrons regardless of age, race, nationality, educational background, or physical condition. The L L M L's approach to customer service for patrons directly supports the library's goals and objectives as stated in its mission statement. All of that was already in that policy. We just removed a lot of stuff that didn't really belong in the customer service policy, we thought. So that was voted on prior to the change in the ordinance. So I don't know, Sean, I guess it's up to you on it whether or not the City Council needs to approve the change in policy because of the timing of when that policy was approved by the board and when the ordinance change happened.
Well, I don't think the ordinance, has the ordinance been published?
It'll publish this Friday and will be effective on the twenty-seventh.
I just wanted to bring that up because of the ordinance change, and so that's, that's the, the policy we've updated since our last report.
So something really fun that I'm excited to tell you guys about is we just recently started our Library of Things. I don't know how many of you are familiar with Library of Things. It's a program where citizens can check out more things than just books at the library. So we've just started purchasing our first four items. So we have a mini projector, a you learn to play ukulele kit that has a ukulele in a book, an electronic drum set. I did include headphones with that kit, which I think parents will appreciate. And a drawing tablet. So we had some leftover money from the Friends of the Library for this year, so these are the first things that we've purchased. Many libraries across the country have huge collections with things like instant pots, air fryers, filming equipments, podcasting equipments, American Girl dolls, Lego sets, ukuleles, computers, just a whole host of things. So it's one of those things where it's something where the library can provide access. So maybe you can't afford to buy podcasting equipment, but you want to try out podcasting, you can check out a kit from the library. And so that's something that you can use continually, you know, keep checking it out, or maybe you think you want to buy an air fryer, but you're not sure. You can check one out for a few weeks, see if you like it, and then bring it back, and then buy your own. So it's just a whole host of things. We don't have a ton of space in our current library, but we have set aside one shelf that we are going to dedicate to Library of Things. And then as we're designing the new library, we're gonna be looking at storage and also shelving so that this is a program that we can expand with the new library. And we're hoping to bring in the Community Engagement Commission on this to kind of do some surveys and get feedback from the community on items that they think would be cool to have in a library of things. The last thing I wanted to mention on this is over the years, we've purchased several STEM kits that we've done classes with at the library. Like I've done classes on Ozobots, which is a mini drawing robot for kids. And then Bloxels is another STEM kit that I purchased for classes. That's a build-your-own-video game. So it has a board game, and then it also has like a tablet or phone component where they can program on the phone. These are not getting continually used every single month at the library. It's just when I, about once or twice a year that I do a class. So we're repurposing them so they can also be used in the Library of Things. So if the kids do the class, then they can, you know, next week, come back, check out a kit, and keep doing it more at home. So it's one of those things where we can kind of use our money a little bit more efficiently. So when we're not using the kits, they can go out into the community, and when we need them back for a class, we can bring them back in and continue to use them. So this is a program, as you can see, I'm really excited about. So yeah, look for that in twenty twenty-four.
Jandy, quick question. Is the checkout time period the same as for books?
We have not officially decided that yet. So, sorry. Some, like, we have laptop kits right now that people can check out, and they just check out for one week.
Yeah.
We have other STEM kits that other libraries have that check out for a month. So we haven't decided yet if we're gonna do a limited checkout of a couple of weeks or do it for a whole month.
Yeah.
So curious.
To be determined.
Okay, on that one.
And then for Halloween, the library had their annual Halloween minion-themed party. We, they had games, face painting, crafts, and trick-or-treating, and there were three hundred and sixty-five people that came to the library for that party. So it was really well-attended by the community.
So the last thing we had is just a quick plug about our Christmas party that's coming up on Thursday. As you can see from the graphics, it's a Grinch theme, so we're calling it a Grinchmas party. But that's gonna be on Thursday from six to seven-thirty. The Friends are helping us out with that program, as is our teen volunteers. And so we'll have a bunch of games and crafts and card making. They're also gonna be showing the Grinch movie and doing a little movie night in the meeting room. So just want to invite everyone in the community to come out to that. So any questions for us?
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. One, one thing I'd really like to say, Jandy, I'm really excited to hear that the Loner Program that you're going to have many, many, many years ago, I worked for a bank in downtown area. I used to take many a lunch hour and walk two blocks over to the main library. And one day while I was there reading something, I saw somebody walking out with a two-foot-by-three-foot piece of art, and I thought, oh, my God, somebody's stealing that. Little did I know that the library has that type of stuff that somebody could check out and take to their home. My wife and I participated in that over the years. I want to say that it was a great program. It was highly utilized. I'm excited to see that we're doing something like that, and I would think it'd be great if we could expand some maybe donations of art or different things that individuals can check out, take to their home for a period of time, get more exposure for the library, and then bring it back. And the key word is bring it back.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Laurel Lake Water and Sewer District. I don't know if there's anybody on that we need to promote participants. I know we're even having some internet issues. Is Bill Janaway or not on there?
I don't see anybody on there.
Okay, all right. So we will, if there is anybody, send a note to, to R I T host, and we'll get you promoted. I did. Oh, I did send Parks and Arts. I am so sorry. Nancy, hi, you've been so patient too.
Good evening, everyone. Nancy Hill, Chair of the Parks and Arts Commission. And do we have our slides? Anyway, we're working still on the Trailhead Art Wall Project, and it's kind of expanded. It's really fun because now we have the student commissioner, and she's really excited about maybe having student art. She's doing that research, and then we're working on possibly a photography angle where photography is art, something a little different. where photography is art, something a little different. And then regular art um that we would have. We have the two dedicated walls, one in the clubhouse entrance and the other as you enter uh the event center and they're all nicely lit. So we're working on that, still working on the beam where I wanted to put the bench. The uh, the little electronic sign is in the way. So we're back to bench one oh one, but we're still working on repurposing um the bench that was from the original Trailhead building. And next slide. Uh, you'll see, I think, an amendment coming up. We've been looking at the program fee schedule, which we had set and was already there, but there was nothing for town square on that. And I know the park is still under development and there's going to be a master plan, but we have had this past year uh quite a bit of use. So we've recommended that we do an amendment to the two thousand and twenty-four fee schedule to add town square to similar fees as what we're charging for like pavilions in Rocky Hill or Orchard Park. So you'll see that coming through. And one of our goals for this year is to go through that whole program schedule before we get to two thousand and twenty-five, make sure we're competitive, do some research in other areas and make sure that we're set as far as, you know, fees and use. And we're recovering, you know, at least some of our costs for, for some of the events.
Great.
And next slide. And finally, um, we're almost to a full slate. We had uh three returning commissioners. Uh, John, you approved at the last meeting, this meeting, I'm on the approval list. And so is Tom Chamberlain. Now, we're both hoping to serve another term. And with that and our two adjunct positions and our student position, we're like a finely tuned machine ready to go. So we, we hope that you'll uh approve Tom and I as you get to that later in the agenda. And we're, we're really looking forward to two thousand and twenty-four. It's kind of like our, our winter stuff, so we're into the inside art right now. Any questions?
Any questions for Nancy?
Thank you. And thanks for all your hard work this year, these meetings. I mean, I just come to a few and you guys are doing a great job. Lot to get through and we appreciate the work you do for the city.
Thank you. All right, so before I miss anybody else, uh, we have no workshops. We are up to general business consent agenda, Mayor Pro Tem.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Make motion to approve general business consent agenda items ten, A, B, C, D and E.
Second.
We have a s- motion and a second by council member Dunn. Any questions? Not hearing or seeing any, all those in favor of approving the general business consent agenda items A, B, C, D and E, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Right, motion passes six zero. No action, I, general business action items, council comments, anything to add? Okay, public hearings and appeals. So um, we've got uh public hearing for community events, development code amendment.
Mayor, quick question.
Yes.
Uh, I, we made an amendment here to add, or we made a motion to add uh the continuation of the public hearing on the Greenstone request.
Right, we, I was going to get through these first two real quick.
I, I just didn't know.
Yeah.
In what order we were doing, okay.
That way we can get these two hopefully quick out the door and we can finish those. Hi, Amy. Hello. Yes. Okie dokie.
All right. Good evening, Council. I will try to be brief as I go through this. Most of what you'll see is the same as what we went over on your, in the twenty-first workshop. So I'll focus mostly on the things that have changed since that workshop. So for a, a brief recap, um, we adopted the docket of amendments with the planning commission back in May. We had two workshops with them, one in June and one in August. Um, we had a planning commission hearing that started on um, started on, in September, but was continued until October and this, this topic wasn't heard until um, until October, where the planning commission unanimously voted to um recommend adoption. Their findings, conclusions and recommendations were ratified on November eighth, which is the same day that I sent the proposed code changes over to our new insurance rep for review. Um, WCIA provided some guidance and feedback relatively quickly within a few days, but those weren't included in the twenty-first workshop or the workshop on the twenty-first, excuse me, um, because they hadn't been reviewed by planning commission yet. So at the December thirteenth meeting, they reviewed those um, they reviewed those um WCIA recommended changes and also um unanimously uh recommended their approval and adoption. Next slide, please. Um, so this pro- this project focuses mostly on community events updating and streamlining the review and permitting process, but there were a couple of kind of um conveniently adjacent changes that we're also recommending, um, mostly because they're part of sections that we're already updating as part of the community event process. So for community events, we're recommending an update to the definition to remove specific examples of events and incorporate language that um speaks to um the potential impacts on city resources. Um, we're also recommending that they um seasonal and special events are removed from the zoning matrix and the limited use sections of all of the zoning chapters, including in the River District. And we're also recommending in the miscellaneous permits section that seasonal and special, the seasonal and special event um section be removed entirely and the um mobile sales and concessions be amended to incorporate language that's supportive of a new chapter, which is ten four I dash five, which is specifically tailored to community events. Um, for public assembly, we're also recommending an update to the definition to remove the requirement for a permit that's included in the definition right now. Um, any of the activities that fall under that definition would either be permitted as a community event, would be considered exempt or would be held in a building or place that is built and permitted for assembly purposes. Um, so then we're also recommending that public assembly be taken out of the use page, out of the zoning matrix and out of the limited use sections. Um, under the temporary buildings, which fall under the miscellaneous permit section, um, we are recommending a clarification be added that storage containers can be used as a temporary building for a limited time on an active construction site. Next slide, please. Um, so the new community event language is too long for me to fit on slides, um, but it includes all of the, the terms that are up on the screen right now. Um, the ones that you see that are noted with an asterisk are the ones that receive changes um based on WCIA's recommendations. So I'll get into those into more details on the next slides. Um, so the insurance requirements um received a small update based on a question that came from our planning commissioners on drone usage. Um, after conversations with our WCIA rep, there was, there's a variety of different types of insurances that we may require depending on the activities that are planned. So I just wanted to get the language to be a little bit more general to um be flexible enough to accommodate those kinds of specialized types of um, types of insurance. For example, drones require aviation liability insurance. So just rather than, yeah, yeah, rather than being too specific and limiting ourselves, just kind of opening it up to the types and amounts that are recommended by our insurance provider. Next slide, please. Um, WCIA strongly recommended that we include um permit conditions in our code language. So I took from their model policy and um refined the list based on what our codes, our code is proposed to say as well as our application. Um, there's seventeen potential conditions, so I didn't list them all, but they range anywhere from requesting an alteration to the date and time to asking for additional dumpsters or garbage facilities or restrooms depending on the, the type of activities and the number of people they're expecting. Excellent. Section M um received a couple of different um changes. This one is really just um clarifying the language. The essence is the same. Our WCIA rep felt that it was a little bit confusing that the way it was originally written kind of insinuated that the first and fourteenth amendment themselves prohibit us from um charging fees, which obviously they don't speak to that. So uh, the essence is the same, it's just a little bit clearer language. Um, next slide. We also um are proposing to add provision number four um, which um allows us to require a cleanup deposit. Um, we have not, to my knowledge, we have not run into a situation where we would need that, but in my research, lots and lots of communities do require this. And so it's more just setting the table for a future process improvement should we find ourselves in a situation where we do need to require cleanup or deposit, cleanup deposits for certain types of activities. They also str- WCIA strongly recommended that we have a violation and penalty section within the code. Um, since this will be housed within our development, our development code, the penalties for violating it are the same as any other code enforcement issue. So it would be a, a class one civil infraction, but I didn't necessarily see the harm in reiterating that in event-specific type of terminology. So the planning commission found that the SEPA review was completed. Um, all public agency notice requirements were met. The public was provided an opportunity for early and continuous participation and the public had the opportunity to submit written comments and testify um at a public hearing. We did not receive any public comments on this topic. The planning commission's conclusions were that the proposed amendment is consistent with the comp plan and not detrimental to public welfare. The proposed amendment is warranted by a change in economic, technological and/or land use conditions. It is necessary to correct an error. It is necessary to clarify meaning or intent. It is necessary to provide for proposed use that was not previously addressed and the proposed amendment is deemed necessary as being in the public interest. They unanimously recommended that the um, that the proposal be adopted.
Okay, thank you. All right, so um, I guess we opened, well, I guess that was technically, we had already opened the public hearing. So sorry, I always forget to mention that. Um, so now we'll go ahead and take um any public comments on the community events development code amendment. Sure y'all are just jumping up, ready to comment. All right, I don't see anybody here. Is there anybody online who um would like to make a, a comment for the public hearing on the community events development code amendment? If so, please send a note to our meeting host. Pause. Give somebody time to type. Nobody? Okay. All right, I didn't, we, I don't think we really expected any, but, all right, so it sounds like we have no public comment. Um, is there any further, any comments or questions from the council? All right, so I guess we'll close the public hearing at nine twenty-six. All right, we'll move on to the deliberations on proposed amendments to the River District Landscape Regulation. Oh wait, so, okay, let me add those, add that to the uh, to the description so I don't miss it. Okay, so we will, so we will go ahead through the deliberations on community events, development code amendment. So, Amy, you back?
Going back to what the planning commission deliberations were, I suppose we need to um put the group together the findings. So that the required SEPA review has been completed, the public agency notice requirements were met, the public partici- the public was provided an opportunity for early and continuous participation and the public had an opportunity to submit written comments and testify at a public hearing.
Madam Mayor, I move that we affirm that the findings of fact are accurate.
Thank you.
We have motion in a second. Um, any discussion? All in favor, um, please say aye.
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 And I'll hear his, mic's on, but he may not have heard us. So motion passes uh five zero.
Okay, so then going to the conclusions, the proposed amendment is or is not consistent with the comp plan and is or is not detrimental to the public welfare?
Madam Mayor, I move that um as stated is uh in fact true.
Wait a second.
Second.
Your motion in a second, any comments? All right, and all those in favor of, sorry, of approving the motion, um, please say aye.
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 Thank you, any opposed? Right, not hearing any, motion passes six zero.
The proposed amendment is or is not warranted by a change in economic, technological and/or land use conditions?
Make a motion that it, we answer yes to that.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second and sorry, I have, can, is there any way we can put that slide back up just so I can follow while I'm reading the motions? While we're doing that, I'll go ahead, is any, any questions, comments on that item? Not hearing any, all of those in favor of upholding the planning commission's recommendation on that item, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero.
It's on page two, three eight.
Okay, two eighty-eight, I didn't feel like scrolling that far, thank you very much, Ted, I will fly down there. Okay, all right, number three.
Let, let, let her move up there. Let me ask this question, does anybody have any objections to the planning commission's recommendations?
That's.
Can we approve them all at the same time?
Yes.
Thank you.
So if you don't have any changes, you can just recommend approval of all of them at, at once.
Okay, make a motion to approve all the planning commission's recommendations.
We have a second, second. All right, motion of the second by council member Dunn. All in favor of approving all of the planning commission's recommendations, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero, thank you. We're just in such a habit of going through all of those.
And now they're, they're on the screen.
Okay, is there a, the amendment?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the amendment and request staff to prepare an ordinance.
Thank you, a motion in a second to prepare the, to approve the amendment and prepare the ordinance. Any questions, concerns? Not hearing any, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? Motion passes six zero. All right, now I gotta flip back to page one. All right, we are up to, where are we now? Deliberations on proposed amendments to the River District Land, Landscape Regulations. Lisa.
Michael, can you pull up the presentation quickly? Thank you. So just to kind of um, to kind of rehash where we're at. The uh, the hearing for the River District Landscape ordinances, um, there we go. Uh, ordinance amendment, this is a, this was initiated, a Greenstone initiated amendment to the landscape code, more specifically the River District, um, that was moving it closer to the amendments we made a couple of years ago um, eh, for the city's uh landscape uh, uh standards. Next slide, please. Um, so they did apply as a part of the annual cycle. Uh, planning commission hearing was actually, this was actually contin- the hearing was continued to October eleventh. They ratified the recommendations for that on November eighth. And then we had the hearing before city council on the twenty-first when Greenstone proposed an amendment to their proposed amendments. So um, you uh, as you will recall, you remanded it back to planning commission to get their, their feedback on the amendments to the proposed amendments. And uh, uh, planning commission did reconsider on December thirteenth and planning com- commission did recommend approval for those proposed amendments. And so, and also that we, for the sake of consistency, that we keep the streets, this street tree section in development code consistent. So we're making the same amendments to this, only the street tree section. Um, next slide, please. So this is, so this is what um Greenstone proposed to change at the last hearing and, and that's to eliminate the uh five-foot minimum uh separation from underground utilities, ducts and non-irrigation pipes, which was an addition that they proposed to add as part of the packet. So um, again, they had indicated that their concern is it is exactly ten feet between sewer and water line, center lines makes it challenging to enforce this because the tree placement may not be exact, so. Um, anyhow, the next slide, please. Planning commi- so the planning commission did recommend approval for that and did um, did uh, uh, make the same findings and conclusions as uh, uh, they previously had noted. So we're on to council.
Okay, all right.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we accept the planning commission's recommendation and ask the staff to prepare as ordinance.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
A motion in second. Um, any questions? Not hearing any, all right, all in favor of? Not hearing any, alright, all in favor of approving. Uh, except approving planning commission's recommendation and moving forward with an ordinance, please say aye.
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 Alright, any opposed? Not hearing any, motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are back to, I'm gonna scroll back.
So I can, I can tell you where you left off.
Thank you.
That would be helpful.
Yes.
So we were looking at the criteria.
And we're gonna restart the pub, the hearing at nine thirty-four.
Thank you. So we were discussing criteria for the amendment to the comp plan and development code. And we were on criteria number three. Whether or not the amendment is necessary to correct an error. And I will remind you that the planning commission found that the proposed amendment is not necessary to correct an error.
Okay. Alright, council member Kurtz.
And Madam Mayor, I just wanted to point out that there was some chat in the Zoom that we were on to. And I just want to make sure that gets put into the public record, so it's not a violation of the open public meeting.
Gotcha, and I believe that does get recorded with the meeting. Okay, thank you. Alright, so do we have a motion for, I'm trying to get to the right, for item number three, criteria number three. It has found that an amendment is or is not necessary to correct an error.
It's just is.
Well, I'm just looking, I'm reading the quick.
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to find that it, on, sorry. That the amendment is not necessary to correct an error.
Thank you, do we have a second? Second, yeah, a second by council member Kurtz, any discussion?
Just confirming Lisa, that is in agreement with the planning commission's observation.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, alright, do you have any, I'm trying to make sure. Council member Kennedy, I see you're off mute, do you have any questions or comment on this one? Okay, alright, any other questions? If not, all in favor of approving, of approving that this. I'm struggling with how to phrase these things.
So approving the, the finding that, or the conclusion that.
The amendment is not necessary.
Hang on a sec, hang on a sec. Kelsey, will you just reread Chris's motion?
Cargill moved that this amendment is not necessary to correct an error.
Alright, so those in favor of approving that statement, that motion, please say aye.
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 Alright, any opposed? Alright, motion pass six zero, number four.
So the fourth conclusion is whether or not, whether it is found that the amendment is or is not necessary to clarify meaning or intent. And I can tell you that the planning commission found that the proposed amendment is necessary to clarify meaning or intent.
Okay. Council member Spencer.
Make the motion to affirm the planning commission's finding that the proposed amendment is necessary to clarify meaning or intent.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any questions? Very well stated. Getting better. Alright, no questions? Alright, all in favor of supporting motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes six zero, number five.
So number five conclusion is that it is found that an amendment is or is not necessary to provide for uses that were not previously addressed. And the planning commission's finding is that the proposed amendment, oh.
Is necessary.
Is necessary.
Yes.
At the top of page eighteen.
Is necessary, yes.
I'm gonna start calling, council member Spencer, index.
I'll, I'll make a motion to affirm the planning commission's conclusion that the proposed amendment is necessary to provide for proposed use that was not previously addressed.
Second.
Okay, we have motion in a second, any questions, discussion, council member Kurtz.
I think my question centers around the previous use that was not previously addressed. Because it seems like the intent is to preserve space, but there isn't a change to the use of the land that I can see. And so I just, I don't know that I would be in favor of affirming this one just based on the discussion that we've had tonight from Mr. Frank and then also from citizens.
Thank you. Did you wanna restate?
Um, just that, the, the land use, like the, the current use of the land is already allowed under the current zoning, the way it is. So there's been the discussion that it, doing the zone changes to protect something. But in the comments, in the chat, it doesn't sound like anything is actually going to change. That's. It's to protect the land, but the HOA that is proposing this change also already owns the land and controls the land. So based on what I've heard tonight, I don't know that, it doesn't seem to me that it is necessary because of the current allowances already made for the land that they already own. But that's just my take on it.
Thank you, council member Spencer's next.
If, if I recall from the presentation, they were gonna be increasing the setbacks from the, from the property line, was that correct?
That's, that's, that is true, that is part of the changes in development regulations, but it's not changing the use.
Okay.
Anybody else?
When I read that statement, I immediately go to the amendment regarding steel containers and not being previously addressed. Is that where the planning commission was coming from?
So that may have been where they were coming from. I, I, I can't say with certainty. But keep in mind that they made these findings after they removed allowing storage containers as a primary use. And since the applicant is also now withdrawing that from it, that's not part of the conversation.
But was it then?
So they went, planning commission started to deliberate on these and then determined that they really had to decide what the regulations were in order to answer these questions based upon the testimony that they heard. And so they actually made the recommendation to modify the language for the development regulations before they came to conclusions on this, which makes a ton of sense.
And then, council member Dunn and then Spencer again.
For me, I recognize that the RD SAP previously did not have an open space defined zone, whereas the city of Liberty Lake does. I recognize that as something that was not previously addressed.
So to clarify, things that were already in the zoning matrix such as espresso stands or farm market, are those considered previously addressed? If, if they were involved in a, in a different designation? Or, or by adding those in this new open space zoning, would that be considered something that hadn't been previously addressed?
So that's interesting because they were allowed in the one zone, but not in the other zone. And, but they have been previously addressed. Again, it's not necessary to change the zone to amend a use. You can simply change the development code. So the question is, you know, is, is it necessary to, I, I, I don't know. Is it necessary to adopt the zone change in order to address a use that wasn't previously addressed? I don't think so. That's, but that's my opinion, again, this is, these are your deliberations.
I still see some minds thinking.
Can I ask a clarification on what the motion is? Is it to approve?
The planning commission's recommendation.
Which was to.
That it is necessary.
It is necessary.
Okay.
Good. Alright, all in favor of supporting the planning commission's recommendation for item number five, please say aye.
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 Okay, so it sounds like, any opposed? Okay, it sounds like that passes five one.
Yep.
Alright, number six.
And the number, number six conclusion is that those amendments are deemed necessary by city council as being in the public interest. And the planning commission found that the proposed amendment is not deemed necessary as being in the public interest.
Thank you, council member Cargill.
I'll make a motion that we accept the planning commission recommendation that it is not necessary as being in the public interest.
Second.
Okay, motion in second. To deem that this is not necessary, correct, so what you said? Yeah.
Correct, yes.
Any questions? Comments? Yes, it would be the, those amendments are deemed necessary by the council as being, as not being in the public interest.
That's what it should be.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Do I need to withdraw that?
You said is not.
Yeah, I said is not necessary, as not being in the public interest, but that.
I think that the language, the key language is, is not. The language from the planning commissions is a little different than what it is for the council.
Right.
So the, the premise is, is not in the public interest, is, is, I think was the motion.
As being in the public interest.
Right, and being, so I think that, that was your intent, and I think that was correct.
Yeah, comment, your part him.
For or com, everything's in. Necessary for the public interest. But you agree with the statement, so.
Whether it's deemed necessary or not.
It's deemed necessary.
Is, is the amendment.
Yeah, the proposed amendment.
Necessary as being in the public interest? Or is it deemed not necessary as being in the public interest? It's not necessary to adopt this based upon it being in the public interest, is how I.
Based on item four, we just said that it's necessary to clarify meaning or intent. So that to me would be in the public interest.
I think this goes to the happiness question.
I mean, I'm about to answer the question, I don't know if there's a right or a wrong, but.
There's, it, it, it's you, these are your, these are your conclusions.
I think they're written separately because, you know, for something to be necessary to clarify meaning or intent, that may or may not be in the public interest. So we have to, we have to deliberate on both of these separately. Because it, it could, it could be against the public interest, but we still, it's still necessary to clarify meaning or intent. So if they wanted to, you know, bring in, you know, a monster truck rally in, at Orchard Park, right? So that would be necessary to clarify meaning or intent, but maybe not necessarily in the public interest.
Any other comments, questions? Alright, all of those in favor of deeming that the amendments are not necessary by the city council as being in the public interest, please say aye.
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 Alright, any opposed? Right, not hearing any, motion passes six zero. Okay, we're on the last, we're on the last leg of this. As, this is all specific to just the zone change.
So criteria for this decision, there has to be a demonstration of compliance with all applicable comprehensive plan policies and map designations. Where, and again, where this criterion cannot be met, a comprehensive plan amendment shall be a prerequisite to the approval. Keep in mind that this is, that the application is both to approve the comprehensive plan amendment and the zone change. So that, that, they've got those two married, obviously, if you do one, you're gonna do the other.
Before we get into this, it is, it's quarter till, so do we have a motion to extend the meeting past ten?
Make a motion to extend the meeting to ten thirty, ten fifteen? Okay, fifteen.
Alright, second?
Second.
We have a motion to extend the meeting to ten fifteen, any, but, any opposed? Alright. We are extended to ten fifteen.
Thank you. So, so again, the question, have, have they demonstrated compliance with all applicable comprehensive plan policies and map designations? So the map designation is part of this, and the two will go forward together. That it's a, it's a change to the comprehensive plan land use map and the zoning map. But there's still, the second half of the question is the policies. That's the.
Did the, did the planning commission make a determination on this?
No, they did not, that was the hearing examiner's, that was the hearing examiner's role. And the hearing examiner kind of punted on this one and said, well, if council finds that the development code amendments are, make sense, and this is consistent with the comp plan, then they should do the zone change. So she didn't really answer those questions, she left them to you to answer.
Council member Kurtz.
So there were six questions that we just answered.
That were related to the development code amendment and the comp plan amendment. This is now related to the zone change. These are the findings that you need, and you need to make, you need to make a determination whether the zone change is consistent with applicable comprehensive plan policies. And, but, but keep in mind that you found at the top that such amendment is not consistent with the comp plan policy. So that may inform this.
I think that's what I was asking, is that we just said, I think, five out of six times, that we, it is not in line with that. So that was where I was headed, that it seemed like for me then, it would be in the negative to this next question.
So you're, you're shaking, nodding your head is in agreement with that assessment?
I'm in agreement with that assessment, but it's not for me to agree with it.
For me, but in the interpretation of.
Yes, I would agree with that interpretation, yes.
Answer a question, that's okay.
So is this ready in motion? Is he gonna do it?
Somebody make a.
Okay, I make a motion that it does not demonstrate compliance with all applicable comprehensive plan policies and map designations.
We have a motion in second by council member Cargill, any other questions? Alright, not hearing any, all in favor of the motion on the floor, I'm not gonna restate it at this point, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes six zero.
Now again, I want to read the second part because that finding significant on the zone change, okay? Where this criterion cannot be met, a comprehensive plan amendment shall be a prerequisite to the approval. So unless you are to change the policies in the comprehensive plan, that finding basically directs how the council should be deciding.
So.
And that's, that's in code.
So does that mean we do not then need to go on to two and three?
Probably not.
And then the second part of that question, I guess, is then do we permanently table the entire thing?
No, you're gonna have to make a motion, you, your choices are always a motion to approve, to approve with modifications or deny.
So.
Remand, I think.
Yeah.
You could.
Remand for consideration.
Remand for reconsideration, but you would, usually the remand is with new information or some direction from council. So, 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 so that, you'd have to provide that. A remand is always an option.
With a basis.
Councilor Kurtz.
So would now be the time to make a motion?
Sounds like it.
I would like to make a motion to deny the zone change request.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a second by council member Spencer. Any comments? That's where we're done.
I, I speak in favor of remand for consideration to the planning commission for this reason. The concept, I believe, of an open space zone is important. I believe that the recipe of this zone is poison. It includes parts that honestly, the people want to have nothing to do with. I think that, that the heart of the matter is land use and what's allowable land use in the specific parcels we're talking about. If what was proposed is open space, denied the land uses that they find objectionable, I think we have a lot of fans in here. So my suggestion is that planning commission consider the zone change, but include. but including land use that's acceptable to the community.
Councilmember Cargill. Remember the discussions on.
On the motion.
Niall, yeah.
I, I also want to speak against the motion, just because I, and I don't, I know the comments were made earlier. We're tired of talking about this, but I feel like it needs more, it needs more baking before it comes back to us. So for that reason, I would, I'd like to try to see it go back to the, or, yes, excuse me, to the planning commission with the hope that perhaps the developer and the, and the neighborhood can come to some sort of compromise on this and not, not say, you know, on one side or the other. So I, I, I don't want to completely get rid of it. I just wish we could remand it back and get more conversation going.
I think we said a quick comment.
I do have a quick comment. We are about to enter into the process of the periodic comprehensive plan update. And we are about to enter into the process of the periodic comprehensive plan update. And perhaps, just a suggestion, perhaps it makes more sense to defer this for reconsideration more comprehensively as part of that periodic comprehensive plan update. It's going to be a heavy lift for the planning commission to try and negotiate a settlement between, between the developer and the neighborhood. And I, but I think that the comprehensive planning process provides a framework for having those kind of conversations. And I think that it's, I, I, I think Councilmember Dunn's point is well taken about the open space zone. But again, much like we've said with other amendments, this one might not be ready for prime time.
Councilmember Spencer.
I'm not going to be able to find it in, in the, in the document here, but it seems like I recall while reading through these, I think the last, before the last meeting was that these are all tied together on an annual basis because there's multiple moving parts that affect one another, and that's why we were looking at this as a group. Is, is that right?
So the only way this could come forward was as a group because you can't change the zoning if it's not consistent with the comp plan, land use. The River District SAP is also adopted by development code, and there was no code language for it. So, yeah, you can't change zoning to a zoning district that doesn't exist. You have to amend the code to do that. And in order to change the zone, it also has to be consistent with the land use maps in both the River District SAP and the comp plan. And so, yes, the, the, the three have to come together. They have to be approved together.
Just, just to follow up to, so to clarify, if we were to deny this amendment, it doesn't necessarily mean that they can't, that they have to stop talking about it and, and trying to move something forward. They can come back with something different, but for now, we don't, we don't have to continue to deliberate on it. If that's what we decide.
That was your decision, if that's what you vote on, then yes. And I, what would happen if you voted to deny it is I would bring you back a document, findings, conclusions, and decision for you to ratify at your next meeting. Maybe not the next meeting, I don't, maybe the next meeting. I'm off on next week.
Or you don't go through that, and we send it back to the planning commission for further discussion, or to be incorporated within the comp plan discussion.
To be incorporated in the comp plan discussion, that could be, but that's a year process. I think that this is an annual cycle amendment, I think you probably, the applicant put his money on the barrelhead. I think you have to give him a decision.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Yeah, I think that that was my point, is I think for tonight, and not trying to be, to rush any sort of decision, but I think we do need to make a decision on whether this zoning changes, happens. Because I think that one of the things with the open space piece, the SAP that Greenstone did included the land that they're talking about wanting protected as open space as open space. That's the way it is currently planned at the moment. And again, they can bring it back. I mean, I mean, I, I like the idea of it going through the comprehensive plan, but I think for a decision for tonight, I would be in support of denying it and then going through the process to amend everything. And then again, I think that that, going through the process makes some sense to me. But I think we can do that with denying it and not remanding it back to the planning commission for work they're already going to be doing. Does that make sense?
All right, any other questions? So, right, so the motion on the floor is to deny the, the request. So we'll go ahead and take a vote on that. So all in favor of denying the applicant's request, please say aye. It sounds like we have three, all those, those opposed? All right, three, three, so I don't think I can, I don't break this tie because it's tied, it would be tied to an ordinance, correct? Or do I break the tie?
You're right, it would ultimately be an ordinance that would be approved. So I would say that would be accurate, I think, from the standpoint of what the ultimate decision is. Because the decision that's being made today will be tied to what's brought back in an ordinance.
And actually, I don't think that the mayor needs to break it because the, because I believe that it just failed by virtue of the fact that.
Right.
Yeah, the motion, motion fails, but I'm talking about what she's able to vote.
But that typically in quasi judicial matter.
I just want to make sure I wasn't.
No, I'm just saying from the standpoint of her voting.
Right, yeah, I don't, okay.
So I don't think you need to vote because I think that, that, the tied vote.
All right, so the motion to deny fails. So now do we have a different option?
Yes, okay, yes.
We have a different motion.
Did you, did you vote opposed? Did people vote nay?
There were, there were three, three. Yes, they did, yeah.
So hopefully I get the language right on this. So I'll make a motion to move discussion on this ordinance to the comprehensive code amendments in 2024? Is that right, Lisa?
So the decision, the, the comp plan won't be adopted until June of 2026.
I'm sorry, help me with what you were saying earlier about the, the process that we're going through next year and moving this.
Starting the comp plan planning process. We're, and there's, there is a whole process associated with the land quantity analysis, population projections. And we have to look at all of the zoning. It would be to, my suggestion would be that you approve this or deny this. And if you deny it, you could certainly direct it for further consideration as part of the periodic comprehensive plan update. So you're not saying no forever, you're just saying it's not ready yet.
Councilmember Spencer, while, while Councilmember Cargill was thinking.
Yeah, so I, I guess just to clarify, it was my understanding our options were approve, approve with changes, or deny. So, so if we want to go back down the road of denying it with the add-on that it's going to be tied to something else later, right? So we, we could still deny it and, and attach it to something, rather than just flat out deny it.
So that would be.
I withdraw whatever I just said. Nobody seconded it, so, that's fine.
And Lisa, what was the language that deny, but then you said, and then as part of the periodic?
But, but explore the concept further as part of the periodic comprehensive plan update.
Okay, so, but I don't think you, you can't make the motion, it would be a different motion.
It's the new, there'd just be another motion.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not.
There was not a second on the motion that he attempted to make.
So I'll make a motion to deny the zone change and to bring it back for further discussion through the periodic review of the comprehensive plan.
Second.
All right, Kelsey, are you got that? Okay, you want to re, read it, make sure we're good?
Councilmember Kurtz moved to deny the zone change and bring it back for further discussion through the periodic review of the comp plan, comprehensive plan.
Great, all right, thank you. Any questions?
Yes, yes, Madam Mayor. Lisa, can you help me with this? Is this a time-sensitive decision? Is this something that if it goes back to the planning commission that could get involved for months on end?
Well, it's, is it a time-sensitive one? No, it's not time-sensitive if you remanded it back to the planning commission. But would it take them months on end to work through this? It absolutely would.
And in effect, by moving it back to the comprehensive plan review, it does, it does go back to planning commission?
It does go back to planning commission, but it also becomes part of a broader community engagement process where we, where we can look at the value of open space in the River District, but make sure that we're meeting the needs of the entire community in those, in, in that land use.
Right, does, does that help clarify, Mike?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
One, one thing real quick, but Lisa, I mean, the, the earliest it would come back to the council is probably not before June. As far as this, this would, the earliest this, this decision-making process from the planning commission is going to be probably not before June.
June of 2020, it might be before June of 2026, but not much before.
Right, so it's not like this is going to come back to you in March.
Right, right, no, this is good, this, this will be a process. It's, the comprehensive plan update is a process. This is a very appropriate question for the comp plan update. And I, I think it's, it gives really a robust forum for the engagement of the neighbors and the citizens as well as the developer.
Okay, real quick, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you. So in the meantime, how do we address the concerns of the site conditions? And what's been going on to date if we're talking a year and a half out for further action?
So, so we're in the midst of a code enforcement action right now. And the containers are still there, but we have, Greenstone has submitted building plans for review. They're, they're, they've, they're going to have to make some revisions to it, it doesn't mean snow load and a couple other things. It's going through design review, but it's a, it's a container, it's, it's a building to house the storage containers. And so it would meet architectural design standards and everything else. That will, you can have storage if it's fully screened or contained within the building, and that's what they're doing.
Smells and.
Well, so, so that's, so there is code enforcement, so that, so yes, that would still become, that, that's a nuisance violation that they'd have to deal with, and so we would be dealing with it through code enforcement. But we are in the process of doing that right now. And, and I, I will say that the site plan for this, the building is actually moving the storage containers away from that property boundary, setting it back thirty-five feet. Right now, I think it's set back like five feet.
Okay, great, I think Councilmember Spencer was next.
Just a point of clarification, and essentially by taking this action, we would be kind of taking the bull by the horns as the city rather than taking something from an applicant as far as this particular discussion goes, is that right?
I, I would say that that is correct. I think it's, you're taking the value of the concept of an open space zone in River District, but you're, you're really vetting it with the community to make sure that the regulations are the regulations that we need for that.
All right, any other comments? All right, not hearing any, we'll go ahead and move to a vote. Those in favor of denying the application and moving this discussion to the periodic comprehensive plan review, please say aye. All right, any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero. Oh, close hearing.
Thank you all, I promise you that if we have another controversial one like this, we'll just schedule, schedule a special council meeting.
Yes, or, or five. Okay, we are no resol, no resolutions, moving on to first read ordinance, Kelsey.
Ordinance number three oh one, an ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending the City of Liberty Lake Development Code and the development code contained in the River District's specific area plan.
Okay, thank you. We have no emergency ordinances, introduction of upcoming agenda items. We can touch this real talk really fast. So we have a bunch of things on the advanced agenda list. I know we're going to be short-staffed between now and the next meeting, the next meeting is the day after New Year's. So it'd be my request that we don't schedule anything that's on that list for the meeting on the second that we, but we can, let's choose what we want to start filling the second meeting in January, maybe a separate workshop on something on this workshop list. Any candidates, Councilmember Kurtz?
I don't know they had candidates, but are we all getting sworn in again? I mean, can we, can we schedule a light meeting so that we can do those things, like maybe we didn't do as well tonight?
Yeah, yeah, I know, we're, I make sure everybody comes in and signs their paperwork before the, before midnight on the thirty-first. So everything's compliant, but we are, we are planning on the little ceremonial thing on the second. So anybody have anything from this list to make sure we put on for the ninth, or we can revisit on the second?
Yes.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, yeah, I propose that we put on for the January second, that, for a discussion and select a new mayor pro temp.
Yeah, that's already on there, way ahead of ya.
Oh, very good, thank you.
Yeah, this, this list is workshops, so we will have that action on the meeting for this on the second.
So is. Very good, thank you.
Sure, is anything on here that anybody wants to make sure we schedule for the second meeting in January? Sounds, doesn't sound like it, so review it and we can talk about it again on the second. All right, citizen comments? Do we have any further citizen comments? I don't know if we have any in here, can someone check online, see if we have any citizen comments after our lengthy discussion on the zone changes? If so, send a note to our meeting host in chat, and he'll lead me down. So it sounds like Mayor Pro Tim has, has, has asked for a couple minutes, so we will give.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor, some departing comments if I can, prepare a statement, it'll only be about thirty minutes long.
Yeah, denied, no.
I really just want to say thank you to everybody, the citizens, the council members. It's been great four years getting to know everybody on this, on this, this council and the mayor and the staff. I mean, without Mark, Lisa, Kelsey, Kyle, Chief, Jan, Jandy, man, this city would be in a hurt without those people. So it's just wonderful from my point of view to, to see that and experience it and share ideas with everybody. That's for darn sure. Just want to say that although over the years that I've been here, we've agreed, we've disagreed, but it's never been personal for me. Even Mr. Dan over there, you and I have agreed on many, many things, and we've disagreed, but it's never been personal, Dan.
Absolutely.
And the same with the Board of Trustees and the library folks and all that, so. So with that, I wish Linda the best, and sorry to say you're not going to get rid of me that easy, so I'll be around.
Good, 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 thank you. All right, no executive session, and if we don't have any other business before the council, I'm just going to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, enjoy your time off, and we'll see everybody on the second. Adjourned. Thank you, appreciate it.